Good evening. Okay. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting laws. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Tuesday, or Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Vice Chair Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flankis.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Thank you.
To everybody here this evening, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Do we have any comments or motion on the minutes for the October 21st Planning Commission meeting?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no comments, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of October 21st, 2010.
Okay. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And those are approved. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that Commissioner's staff, applicant, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, item 20, the applicant has requested this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 23, the applicant has requested this item be tabled. And item 30, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the March 2011 Planning Commission meeting.
What was the second one, please? Do we have a motion on the housekeeping items?
What was the abandon date in March for item 30?
The Planning Commission meeting in March. They haven't adopted the calendar yet.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody wish to speak on any of the three items which were having brought forward and held, seeing no one motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to obey or table the items as read into the record. Motion would be to follow the recommendation.
There's a motion for approval of the housekeeping items. Please cast your vote. And those are approved. Thank you. Now we go to consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted in one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. And we have no consent items, so we're going to move on to our one motion, one vote items. The following items that may be considered in the one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing items and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have the item removed from this part of the agenda. Item 6, GPA 39334, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, zoning for PF, public facility to see commercial northwest corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Gas. Item 7, TMP 39472, applicant owner, the Howard Hughes Corporation, for an 81 lot, single-family residential subdivision adjacent to the south side of Alta Drive between Desert Foothills Drive and Fox Hill Drive. Item 8, ZON 39754, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from RE Single Family Residential to CV Civic at 4200 East Charleston Boulevard. Item 9, ZON 39757, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, request for rezoning from RE Residential Estates to CV Civic at 1301 Michael Way. Item 10, ZON 39769, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, request for rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to CV Civic at 232 Shadow Lane. Item 11, RQR 39371, applicant Reagan National Advertising, owner COG3 Limited, for a 40-foot by 14 by 48-foot off-premise sign at 100110 South Rainbow Boulevard. Item 12, RQR 39499, applicant Las Vegas Billboards, owner Fong Imperial Plaza Limited Partnership, for a 40-foot tall 12 by 24-foot off-premise sign at 1571 North Decatur Boulevard. Item 13, RQR 39575, applicant Gold and Silver Jewelry Supply, owner Solomon Hibashi, for a second-hand dealer used jewelry within an existing 2,300 square foot jewelry store at 1300 East Sahara Avenue. Item 14, MSP 39809, applicant owner Fairway Chevrolet Company, for an existing motor vehicle sales new establishment at 3100 and 3222 East Sahara Avenue. These items were listed as public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight wishing to speak on these items or wish to have these items pulled from this section of the agenda? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Commissioner Evans?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda items 6 through 14 on the one motion, one vote portion of our agenda, subject to all the conditions of the staff. Motion for approval.
There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and...
Items 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13 will go to the City Council on December 15th. Items 7 and 14 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
We now go to our public hearing items. Item 15, GPA 39579, applicant owner, Pataca P. and Tacey M. Mirahira, from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to Service Commercial at 6640 West Cheyenne Avenue. Companion item, ZON 38580, from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. Item 17, VAR 38576, to allow a 10-foot setback from the west and east property lines and a 20-foot setback from the north property line, where residential adjacency standards require a minimum of 81 feet from the west property line and 84 feet from the north and east property lines. Note, the variance request has been amended to allow a 10-foot setback from the east property line, where residential adjacency standards require a 30-foot setback. A variance from the west and north property lines is no longer needed. Items 18, SUP 38574, for a proposed 47-bed, 17,777 square foot convalescent care facility, nursing home. Note, the special use request has been amended to a proposed 31-bed, 15,114 square foot convalescent care facility nursing. And item 19, companion item, SDR 38577, for a proposed two-story, 17,777 square foot convalescent care facility nursing home, and a waiver of the perimeter buffer standards to allow four feet along the south perimeter where 15 feet is required, zero feet along the portion of the west and east perimeters where eight feet is required, and zero feet between the sidewalk and the back of curb where five feet is required adjacent to an arterial street. Note, the site development plan review request has been amended to a proposed single-story, 15,114 square foot convalescent care facility nursing home, and a waiver to allow three-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has submitted revised plans that are somewhat scaled back from the previous proposal heard at the August 26th Planning Commission meeting. The plans show one additional single-story building of 11,240 square feet on the northern portion of the site. That would add 21 additional beds. The garage of the existing residence will also be converted to living space as a part of this request. Because a convalescent care facility nursing home is a commercial use, land use and zoning classifications must be changed from residential to commercial. The proposed change in land use is appropriate, as it is situated on a primary arterial street that contains mainly commercial uses to the east and west. Staff therefore recommends approval of the general plan amendment and rezoning requests. As proposed, the site is overbuilt, as is evidenced by the need for landscape waivers and a variance for residential adjacency. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the associated variance, special use permit, and site development plan review. If the applications are denied, the site will remain residentially designated with a previously approved 10-bed community residence use. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and concern for the items since publication.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Sir?
Yes, my name is Pataca Miahira, and this is what my wife and I are proposing. Last time we had a two-story building, and I felt it was just too large. My gut feeling was, so let's go back to the drawing board. And we've designed this to where if you look at the building, it's 15 feet overall height from finished floor to the top of the roof line. I've gone to my neighbor on the north side of me, which would be on the rear of the building, and spoke with him, and he has no problem with doing that if I make the commitment to, and if it'd be all right to get a variance or a waiver to increase the rear block wall to eight foot in height. And I said that I would if I was allowed to, and plant the appropriate trees. And he said that if I would do that, then he would agree to letting us build that there. The two property owners on the east side of me have not protested, as far as I know. There is another protest, Mr. Troup. He may be here, and he has concerns. But we're trying to put this in here to be pretty much neighborhood-friendly. We'd like to stay away from having a lot of lighting on the outside, because that was a neighborhood concern, of having spotlights and larger street lighting on the outside. And I said that we would do landscape lighting on the rear, and with the trees and shrubs, it wouldn't shine into their backyards. We're asking for this to go through. Any questions from me?
We may have. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Do you wish to speak, sir?
No, sir. I'm only associated with Mr. Mirahara.
Okay.
He's my consultant, Jeff Robbins.
You want to put your name on the record, please?
My name is Jeff Robbins, 2261 Rosanna Street.
Okay. If you'll step aside, we'll let these people make their comments, and we'll see where we go from here.
Steve Troup, 3264 North Gerheim. The property that adjacent to the east is his brother-in-law, so therefore there will be no complaints. If this goes through, I'm sure he'll consider doing the same thing. Property adjacent, one property over is zoned commercial, professional, and I was told by the county commissioner when that was rezoned, is what all of Cheyenne should be, is commercial, professional, so there is no activity at night on the weekends. And why's he got two zone changes in here? Whitechapel Ranch Estates to residential and C1 and Service Commercial? Is that the same thing, or is that something different?
Staff, do you want to explain that real quickly?
Mr. Chairman, the first item is a general plan amendment that would change the future land use designation from Desert Rural Density Residential to Service Commercial. The second item, item 16, would rezone the property from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. So there are two different items.
Then in the third item, number 17, it says, a variance from the east-west property lines is no longer needed. It's never been changed from 84 feet to 20 feet. Am I correct? So why is there nothing needed?
Basically, those are residential adjacency. I think staff will clarify that, that because of the height of the building, the setbacks change. When it was a two-story building, because of the slope of the roof and the height, you had to be farther back from the property line. When you go to a single-story building, that changes.
Ranch Estates is 84 feet, correct?
No, no, no.
If I may, this proposal is to not only change the designation and the zoning, as Mr. Gavicki indicated, but is also for this project. So this project is analyzed based on that proposed change of zone, because this project couldn't go through unless that occurred. So all the analysis is made assuming the entire project is approved, so that's how we're analyzing it, not as if it were a single-family home.
Well, I'd like to put my protest in for it, because we have several large care facilities in the area on Buffalo and Jones in Cheyenne, much larger than what is proposed here, so I don't see how they can compete. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Charles Chartray. I'm representing the property owner to the north at 3265 North Gerheim Street. As the applicant has stated, we've come to an agreement that if he would build an eight-foot, increase the current block wall fence from the current five-foot to eight-foot, and plant trees along that north wall, that we wouldn't have any objection to the 20-foot setback to the north and 10-foot setbacks on the east. We do appreciate him replying from two-story to one-story, and we feel that if he really does want to put that kind of business there, that he should be allowed to go ahead and do it, because nursing homes are becoming needed as some of us get older. So we just wanted to state for the record that we didn't have a problem, that we did have prior.
So your main concern is the two-story nature, so the single story is more agreeable?
If he'll build the eight-foot fence and go one-story, and non-intrusive lighting, then we don't have a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Give you a chance to, any further comments?
No, I...
Commissioner, questions? Commissioner...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm kind of looking at this with mixed emotions pertaining to this. First of all, we approved you on your original facility, which was the existing building, and to have a 10-bed facility with a one-year review on it. And within about a month after you approved it at the city council level, you were back with this project, increasing it to a 47-bed facility with 17,777 square feet. Then we had protests from the neighbors, you know, which I could 100% agree with them, because now all of a sudden their backyard is being viewed by your second floor. Then you turned around, and you've redone everything. You've gone to a one-story building now, which I appreciate. And I also appreciate the fact, this is not a bad buffer between a residential and a main arterial. One of the problems I do have is you had a meeting with staff on October 13th, and they suggested that you have a neighborhood meeting. And first question I have, did you have that neighborhood meeting?
I didn't have a formal neighborhood meeting, but I walked the neighborhood and talked to the neighbors.
Okay. My understanding is it's your brother-in-law or something next door to you, to the east.
Yes.
And then you talked to him, I'm assuming, and then you also probably talked to the individual north of you, which is your rear. Did you have meetings with anybody else?
I had a meeting with Mr. Troup. I went to his house that he, the man that came up here and opposed, talked to him and showed him the line of sight drawing of what it would look like from someone else's home to nearby home, the adjacent home. And this is what portrays the line of sight. Spoke to him, and he had his views, and I did that out of courtesy, out of respect. And then previously, I'd walked the neighborhood and spoke to some other people in the neighborhood cul-de-sac on the west of me, and they said that, and they signed a petition for, in favor of it, and they said that they don't mind me putting something there.
Do you have that petition with you this evening?
No, the staff has it from the previous meeting.
Okay.
The, you know, the, one of the problems we're having here, again, it's the same problem you had at the previous meeting, where you're building too much on a limited amount of space. And it seems to fit right now, but you're going to need these waivers. With that said, I'm going to reluctantly support this. But I think before the city council meeting, I would highly recommend you hold a neighborhood meeting there and talk to some of these folks, because, you know, it impacts them. It's clear that the north side of Cheyenne's going commercial, and it's probably going to be the trend. But you still have residential to the north of you, you have residential across the street. And once again, one of the reasons I'm supporting this is I think it's a fairly decent buffer from, you know, residential to a main arterial. With that said, I think I'll support you, however qualify that by say reluctantly.
I will have the neighborhood meeting before the next...
Commissioner Trowbridge?
I, too, would support the request, with the conditions that the two issues that were brought up by the result of the public hearing, where the back wall would be increased eight feet, and also the appropriate number of trees be planted, and that those be included as conditions for approval.
Commissioner Goines?
Can I ask you, how come you didn't do a formal neighborhood meeting?
Well, I had two meetings previously, and we had, I believe there were four people that showed up on the first one, and then I wasn't there for the second one. The main opposition that I had was Mr. Troup, and the property on the north was vacant, so the bank owned it, so no one came. But since then, I walked and talked with them. And the people on the west side, I walked in that cul-de-sac, and I spoke to the people in that cul-de-sac, and they actually signed the petition that staff has. One person, their gates were locked, and I couldn't get a hold of them, and I went by, and their gates were still locked. I can see them from our backyard. I can see them.
But still, my question was, why didn't you have the formal meeting of doing a mail-out and a request?
For this time? I had two previous, and I didn't feel like it was necessary for this meeting, because I had already spent $1,000 for, you know, $500 each time.
So it cost too much to do one of them?
Well, it costs money, you know, and I'm not a rich man. Thank you.
Any other comments? Question for staff. You're proposing this new, the applicant's proposing a new building. What's going to happen in the existing residential structure? Does that revert to the previously approved 10-bed facility within that, or what are we to expect there?
Mr. Chairman, that existing house becomes part of the convalescent care facility and would be converted to that use.
So that figures into the 31-bed number, then?
Correct.
Okay. And the property is adequately parked?
Mr. Chairman, yes, it is.
And... One question with your site plan, and obviously this is more of a question for staff, is the way this is built on the property and the size of the structure, it seems to me that we're talking about a convalescent facility with non-ambulatory or ambulatory residents. I would typically look at a building like this to have circulation around the building to get people out in case of fire, emergency, or anything such as that. Staff, does it have any concerns with that?
Mr. Chairman, during the pre-op meetings and so forth, fire and building were present and did not cause any concerns, although that will be considered during the building permit process as well.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, probably time for motion sorts.
Mr. Chairman, I would go ahead and move to approve item number 15, GPA 38579, with subject to staff's conditions, and also with the additional condition that he constructed an eight-foot wall in height in the back of his property, as agreed to with his northern neighbor, and to also have the additional condition that the number of trees required will be planted.
If I may, those will be on item 19, so we'll pick those up when we get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on item 15, the motion is for approval of GPA 38579. If there are no other comments or questions, please cast your vote.
I have a quick question. I know the commissioner said between now and city council. Are you going to try to go back and have a meeting between now and there?
Yeah. Yes. Yes. We'll go to the city probably either tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday, and we'll get on record and pay money to get flyers out to have a neighborhood meeting.
Thank you.
Find a good location.
The reason I say that, because we talked about protests, and you have over 11 to 12 protests in here on the item, not just one or two, like you mentioned earlier. So that was my concern.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I guess I just don't understand, if the reason for you not having a neighborhood meeting was financial, you've still got to have that before the city council meeting. So I'm just a little uncomfortable supporting this before that neighborhood meeting, and I'm not sure that's a good reason.
Well, like I said before, we had two meetings previously, and we had, I think, four people showed up, and then there was two or three more that came on the second meeting, and we addressed their concerns, listened to them, and I didn't see the need for another one, because I walked the neighborhood here a couple of nights ago.
But you see a need to have one now, prior to the city council meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. I should have maybe had, I should have had the meeting now.
Yeah, I think you should.
There is the motion for approval on item 15. Any other votes? That is approved, and, sorry, the public hearing was closed.
Mr. Chairman, on item number 16, zoning 38580, again, moved to approve, subject to the, to the conditions of staff.
There's a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved. Item 17, VAR 38576.
Mr. Chairman, I also move to approve item 17, VAR 38576, subject to staff's conditions.
Okay. There's a motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved. Item 18, SUP 38574.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item 18, SUP 38574, subject to staff's conditions.
And that is approved also. Item 19, SDR 38577, and this is where Director Weir...
If I may, a proposed additional condition would be that the rear block wall shall be eight feet in height, and all lighting in the north yard shall be beneath the level of the wall height. Separately, with regard to the trees, they're already planting in the northern yard there three times the amount of trees required by the code, so I think that will be adequate based upon the plan.
Okay. So there is a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, item 19, SDR 38577, moved to approve with the conditions just mentioned.
Okay. There's a motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and these items will all go into city council on December... And that is approved and these items will all go into city council on December fifteenth.
Thank you.
And as the applicant has agreed, you plan to meet with staff by Tuesday and make the application for a public hearing, a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go to items twenty-one and twenty-two, related items. Twenty-one, VAR three-nine-eight-zero-four, applicant, Western Linen Services, Inc., owner, Osoph Nevada, Inc., to allow zero additional parking spaces where forty-four additional parking spaces are required for a Cleaners Commercial Industrial at seventy-three fifty Prairie Falcon Road. And items twenty-two, SUP three-nine-eight-zero-one, for a Cleaners Commercial Industrial.
Mr. Chairman, the Cleaners Commercial Industrial use is permitted at the subject location with an approved special use permit. This proposal also requires a variance for reduced parking. Evidence has been provided that the site can accommodate the proposed use and will not negatively impact the existing uses on the site or in the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note that there are additional letters of support for the items since publication and if approved, condition of approval number six should be deleted as it does not apply to the proposed use.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, Las Vegas, Nevada, on behalf of the applicant, along with Mr. Jim Slatcher of Western Linen Services, who is here to answer any technical questions you may have in regard to the proposed operation. We have reviewed the staff report and we have found it to be very thorough in indicating to you exactly why these two items should be approved. We thank staff for their approval recommendation on both SUP and the parking variance. And I'm simply going to say that we agree with the conditions as amended just now by staff and we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We would ask for your support.
Okay. This was advertised public hearing. Is there anybody here wish to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Ken Small, I'm here representing the Architectural Review Board of the Property Owners Association. I'm a little bit confused about what's going on and maybe-
Do you have an address, Mr. Small?
Sure. My architectural firm is SSA Architecture at forty-six thirty South Arville, Suite A, Las Vegas.
Okay.
And so this afternoon at one-thirty, I had a conversation with Rob Namie, who apparently represents the property owner. And he agreed verbally to comply with the support letter and recommendations from the Architectural Review Committee. And I don't find this in what you're in the process of approving here, so.
We wouldn't have, I don't believe we have any letter from the additional letters from the Architectural Review, but if you'd like to give those to the clerk and if there's something that we can address, we would be glad to.
Okay. Basically, the situation is that we only learned that this item was being heard at one-thirty this afternoon and the homeowners association wasn't, I mean, the property owners association wasn't noticed on this. And so we thought that we had an agreement with Mr. Namie to consent to the support letter which the Architectural Review Board gave them several weeks ago per our conversation this afternoon. And from that, we were going to support this. If they're not, then I guess we'll ask for proper notice and to continue this item for two weeks so that the Property Owners Association Architectural Review Board can consider what to do.
Well, I don't think we would, should hold up because the Architectural Review Board, all the property owners were appropriately noticed and this is a second meeting before us, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
If I can have the director look at this?
The pre-application meeting was held in, on September twenty-fourth, at which time the staff discussed with the applicant that prior to the issuance of building permits, the letter of approval from the Las Vegas Technology Architectural Review Committee would be required. So that was discussed back in September. And again, the requirement is prior to the issuance of the building permits, not prior to the discretionary approval by this board.
I see. Well, apparently from the information that I have, and I work outside the offices of the Property Owners Association, that the Property Association was not notified according to what they told me this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I can jump in here, maybe we can, we can get past this.
Sure.
We essentially agree with the approval letter that we received and I'll be happy to go through those items with you. We will agree on the record. We don't know that necessarily all of those items should be included as specific conditions. As an example, one of the conditions that they, or one of the requests that they have made is a specific drive path that the vehicles from Western Linen will use to enter and exit the property. We have no objection to following that path and Western Linen has agreed to inform their drivers to follow that, that line that has been drawn on a map. But I don't think that's a condition that the city can necessarily enforce. So on the record, we're happy to agree to it, but I don't think it's a condition that you want to put within your conditions. Another thing that came up this afternoon, and for Commissioner Flengus, I will put on the record, I spoke to him this morning and at the time we spoke, this was before any of this came up. So I apologize for that. But one of the conditions that came up this afternoon was some confusion over the extension of the existing block, block wall. And if I can go to the overhead, please. Thank you. There's an existing block wall that currently exists from the north edge of the western wall of the building going northerly up to approximately where the driveline is. One of the requests from the association is that that wall be extended to the north property line with a sliding gate across the opening in order to block the view of the loading area behind the building. We would agree to a condition of that nature, matching the height of the existing wall. I spoke with Mr. Drew Levy, who is representing the association this afternoon, and he indicated to me that they would have no objection to a condition of that nature being placed on the project with a timeframe of approximately ninety days for completion following occupancy of the building. And hopefully that has been passed on. I don't know if there's anything else I'm missing. If there is, we're happy to stipulate to it.
Well, I think we're in pretty close agreement here. What we've asked is that they'll sign the letter of agreement with respect to the issue of whether they'll send their trucks where they're supposed to be sent. It is more of a gentleman's agreement.
We're getting off field here. What I'd like to do is, if you guys have some negotiations with yourself, we'll trail this, you can resolve those, then we're glad to take action. But we're not going to be the arbiters of your negotiation up here.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind the board that, you know, this is a private covenant condition and restriction that involves this particular subdivision that has nothing to do with what you're agenda for today.
Right.
There's someone else to speak here?
Public hearing is still open. If, please give us your name and your comments.
My name is Anne Smith and my address is four-five-one-six Inez Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I am a member of the Las Vegas Tech Center Board and I'm just here by coincidence for item number thirty-one. So I was just coming up in case there were any questions about the intent of the items that were in the letter to the board, from the board. The traffic is probably one of the biggest things because that has turned into a medical corridor on Tenaya and is our desire to respect that. There's a lot of patient traffic on Tenaya, so that's why the request was for the diverted exiting, exiting and entering of their site.
Well, I can tell you honestly, it'd be almost, it would be impossible for us to even consider policing whether a truck driver finds the right path on a regular basis. So as long as they're public right-ofways and it's an approved, if it's an approved use, that's as far as I understand we're going to go on this. But we appreciate-
We understood that. We just, and they've agreed in concept, so.
All right. If there are no other-
Mr. Chairman, we're willing to stipulate through Western Linen that the property owner will sign the letter and agree to the conditions that they are requesting.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody else wish to speak on the item? Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close.
In that case, then we'd like to offer our support for their proposal.
See how easy that was?
Yes. And welcome to the neighborhood.
Absolutely. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments for commissioners? I have one technical question for Western Linen. Obviously, as the lady mentioned, this is a medical corridor or resurfaced into a medical corridor. This building was designed as a printing facility originally and it is where, it is what it is and I think your use works appropriately there. What I would like to know is, is there, because of the nature of a dry cleaning facility, the chemicals, cleaning, cleaning items, is there a, a cleaning interceptor part of this program or to make sure that we don't have any groundwater issues?
Yeah. With regards to any and all normal laundry chemicals, first of all, we're not a dry cleaner, so there is none of the PERC and those type chemicals. All chemicals will be stored in double-wall self-contained tanks so that there will not be any issue of any runoff into any sewer whatsoever.
Okay. And those are all regulated by?
The fire department.
Fire Department Building Co. Well, is there any other comments, motion, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further comment. I would then move to, on item twenty-one, VAR three-nine-eight-zero-four, I would move to follow staff's recommendation and to approve.
There's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved and this is final action in the absence of an appeal. Item twenty-two?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number twenty-two, SUP three-nine-eight-zero-one, and subject to all the conditions of staff.
Okay. There's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote.
That's as amended?
As amended. And that is approved. And this is all final action, again, is in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, VAR three-nine-eight-one-five, applicant, Mahogany Run, owner, Isaiah Fifty-four-seventeen LLC, to allow a one-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required for a proposed six thousand six square foot auto repair garage minor on the south side of Rome Boulevard, approximately six hundred and forty feet west of Riley Street.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is currently undeveloped with a, with previously approved entitlements for an auto repair garage minor. A plan submitted for these entitlements depicted the addition of a portion of vacated public right-ofway from Giuliano Road to the east to be used for access and parking. A currently submitted plan indicates that the vacated right-ofway will be attached to the property to the east, which is under common ownership at this time. This will result in the east property line being located one foot from the proposed building and will not conform to the requirements of the Town Center Development Standards Manual. A variance is therefore required. As the hardship is self-imposed and could be rectified by the recordation of a mapping action, staff recommends denial of the variance request. If denied, remapped new site will be required for development of the property in conformance to the previously approved site development plan review or a new site development plan review will be required.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, address is eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. I'm here before you this evening representing the applicant. If you recall, it was before this board, I believe, back in February of this year with regard to this applicant at this very site. This board unanimously approved the site plan review, the various variances, including the parking, as well as the vacation of Giuliano Road, which is located just to the east of the site. It subsequently went up to city council, where city council also unanimously approved this, this use and the zone change and site development review. As part of the application, as I had mentioned, we did have a vacation of Giuliano Road, which is located just to the east of the site in between what is the Cole Center and the off-ramp of the two fifteen here. The thirty-foot portion on the western parcel had already been vacated, so what we were actually vacating was the thirty-foot parcel that would have reverted back to the eastern parcel. As we were going through submitting improvement plans, it came to our attention by the city that we in fact showed on our site plan that this thirty feet was going to revert to the western parcel, when in fact our intent was to keep it on the eastern parcel. As evidence of that, we had agreed to a condition that we're going to have, enter into a cross-parking and cross-access agreement with both parcels here, which happened to be owned by the same property owner. In light of our error and the, working with the city, we felt it was best that we come back in with this variance because it now shows that our building does not meet the side setback, as you can see right here. It would be on the eastern parcel right there. So what initially looked like we had met the, the side setback, we in fact only meet, it's now only one foot. But with all that being said, this is exactly the same project that we showed you back in February, same project we showed city council back in March. It's functioning exactly the same. It's just really, I think, more of a cleanup item and hopefully we can receive your support tonight. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. This was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the item, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioners? Commissioner Moody?
I also see this as a cleanup item and I appreciate your clarification. And if there's not any more discussion, I would recommend approval of item twenty-four.
There's a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved and that is final action in the absence of an appeal.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Item twenty-five, VAR three-nine-eight-one-six, applicant owner, Charles Hooper, to allow a one-foot, six-inch side yard setback where fifteen feet are required for a proposed two-car carport at three oh five Rosemary Lane.
Mr. Chairman, the site currently contains a ranch-style single-family home. The applicant is proposing to build a carport on the south side of the building. Staff recommends denial as there is no evidence of a hardship in regards to the dimensions of the property and that the carport could be designed to meet Title Nineteen. If the request is denied, the carport will not be permitted to be built within the required setback area.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Trevor Hayes, three-one-zero-eight Sonia Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This neighborhood, it's located between Valley View and Rancho, just north of Alta. It's a number of, mostly single-story ranch-style homes built in the sixties. It is zoned RE, however, it is not necessarily rural in its makeup as you'd think of normally with RE. It's a more traditional neighborhood. The neighborhood has a lot of houses that have no garage. He's simply trying to build a carport to keep his vehicles, you know, safe from the weather and the elements. A number of the houses in the neighborhood, ninety by my count, did not, I mean, obviously they were grandfathered in as it became RE after those homes were built, but were closer than fifteen feet setback from their side neighbor. This would fit in with the characteristics of the neighborhood and be compatible with the surrounding neighbors. I had spoken with the councilman, the councilwoman prior to putting in the application and she encouraged me to speak with the neighbors, you know, three or four to the north and down the cul-de-sac that it faces. I spoke with all but one. The immediately south-facing neighbor was not home and we tried repeatedly to reach that person. It is our belief that that house is currently in some process of foreclosure. This is an older neighborhood built in the sixties and the neighborhood, neighbors I spoke with all were very excited about the changes he was making. He's put a considerable amount of money in to bring it up to date and most of them were very excited about the improvements to the neighborhood and none had any objections that I spoke with. The only comment card I saw that had come in, and maybe there's an update, was one from Rancho Bel Air, an adjacent neighborhood. The person would be three or four houses north and two or three houses west, east rather, of this site. They couldn't even see the carport from where they're at. So I'd ask for your approval at this time.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, I drove by there on my way here tonight and everybody in the neighborhood adds carports to enhance their, their house. So it's going to be a nice remodel and a nice addition to the neighborhood. So with that, I'll move to approve variance three-nine-eight-one-six with all of staff's recommendations.
Is there any other comments, questions? There is a motion for approval, subject to staff's recommendations, as if approved. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on December 15th.
Thank you very much.
Item 26 SUP 39745, applicant Rong Gee Ni, owner PK1 Cheyenne Commons LLC, to add a beer/wine cooler on sale established, used within an existing 2,400 square foot restaurant within, with waiver to allow 390-foot distance separation from a church or synagogue where 400 feet is required, at 3175 North Rainbow Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, the restaurant provides 85 seats. The proposed use doesn't require any additional parking beyond that, which is required for the principal use on the site. Staff recommends approval of the request and the accompanying distance separation waiver, as it can be conducted in a manner that is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding properties. If the application is denied, the restaurant would not be allowed to sell alcoholic beverages. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received after publication.
Hey, Mr. Rankin, it appears our applicant is not here at this time?
Not here.
Oh, he is? Please come forward.
Thank you.
And you have read all of staff's conditions and requirements, and you're in agreement with everything staff has recommended?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there are no, anybody here wish to speak on this item? Seeing no enclosed public hearing. Commissioner Goines?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with this. This is in a large shopping center with Walmart as an anchor, and I believe a-
Yeah, a big center, you know. Big. People there. We can just show the, and watch.
Yeah, it's a big shopping center. And this restaurant has always been an Asian restaurant, overly, I know for the last 15 years that I've been affiliated with that area, so I have no problem with this, and I think it's, make a motion for approval.
There is a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions. Any other comments, please cast your vote. That is approved, and this is final action in the absence of an appeal. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Item 27 SUP 39812, applicant All-Star Mini Mart, owner Becker Investment Company LP, to add a 15-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale, used within an existing 2,400 square foot convenience store, with a waiver to allow a 100-foot distance separation from a church synagogue where 400 feet is required, at 2339 North Jones Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the use cannot be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner, due to the distance separation waivers and the additional alcohol uses in the area, and staff recommends denial. If the application is denied, the convenience store would not be allowed to conduct the, an accessory package liquor off-sale establishment on the premises. Please note, we received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, before you start with the public hearing, I have to abstain on this matter, because I was involved in extensive litigation against one of the principals of the owner, Arnie Becker Jr., so out of an abundance of caution, I will be abstaining.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Laura Dreah, 520 South 4th Street, here on behalf of the applicant All-Star Mini Mart, which is run by the Shashani family. All-Star Mini Mart is located here at the southeast corner of Smoke Ranch and Jones Boulevard. They have held a permit to sell beer and wine since the year 2000, and have never been cited by Metro with any problems. The staff report reads that the management company of the complex keeps the place clean and free of debris. In terms of the religious institution, that would be the Agatha Fellowship, which is located here in a shopping center that faces Smoke Ranch. The actual distance between the two buildings is more than 425 feet, but of course, code measures just the width of Smoke Ranch Road, which is 100 and something feet, because of parcel line to parcel line. Before the applicant hired us to apply for this permit to sell off-sale packaged liquor, they did collect a number of letters of support from nearby residents. I looked them up myself on Open Web Info Mapper, and all of them live within a mile. I'll submit this, for the record, there's 27 of them. And again, business license code requires anything that's considered hard alcohol to be located behind the clerk's cash register desk, so that the public is not able to reach out and grab it themselves. The clerk has to make sure that they're not selling alcohol to people that are already intoxicated, underage, et cetera. So with that, I ask you to consider allowing the Shashani family to sell off-sale packaged liquor.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioners, Commissioner Goines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure of visiting the store last night. Thank you, Mr. Roger, for giving me the contact person. So I spent about 45 minutes at the store. It's a small neighborhood store, mom-and-pop store. While I was there, I was able to talk to a few of the customers coming in and out, and they actually lived in the neighborhood. Although he wants packaged hard liquor, there are no other ones in the area. There's a couple of convenience stores. I didn't have a problem with it, specifically because the product will be stored behind the counter, out of reach of the public. So with that, I'd move for approval of item 27 SUP 39812, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Okay. There's a motion, any other comments? I do have one comment, and as I did speak to the applicant's representative a while last week, or this week, I guess it was. My concern with this is not that they run a great operation, because, I mean, it's, I've been by there, it's a clean store, and they seem to be running good operation. But my biggest concern here is we have no less than three other convenience stores at this intersection, and all, they're in close proximity to the highest, junior high school, close proximity, and my real concerns are that, I have no problem with beer and wine in convenience stores. We approve it all the time, and it's customary, just like I'm in slot machines in convenience stores in this town. It's just, personally, I think when we start opening up the door to put hard liquor in convenience stores, even with safeguards that go into that, we start to change where, how do we say no to the guy across the street, or the other two, the one that's closer to the church? To me, it isn't an issue with the church distance, because, you know, these convenience stores were all there prior to the church going in line in that center, so I think that's still a nature of our community. But I do have a concern, and I'm not sure I support the motion with regards to having that many convenience stores that could be applying for liquor and us basically going over that line at this intersection. So just wanted to make those comments for the record, but there is a motion for approval.
Follow-up on that comment, or somewhat of a different perspective, rather, is, I do understand the idea that we don't want necessarily to have excessive alcohol uses in particular areas. What does concern me, though, is that I think, as in this case, we have to take it on a case-by-case basis, and I find it somewhat objectionable that, as a matter of somewhat right, every big-box grocery store gets to have a liquor component, and sometimes a very substantial liquor component, within their store. The argument is, it's a very small and incidental portion of their use. I would argue that in many of the urban areas, and throughout parts of the town that really are somewhat economically disadvantaged, there are many of these grocery stores where there's tons of mischief in the parking lots. You know, there's people that hit you up for money, try to sell you drugs, have a bottle and a bag, and yet, we never say anything to a big-box grocery store. And then you get a good mom-and-pop operation, who runs a really good store, and where the individual cannot come in there and shoplift bottles of liquor, because they have to go behind a counter, and it has to actually be served by someone who checks their ID or whatever. I think it creates a bit of an unfair disadvantage, and I'd like to be able to take it on a case-by-case basis, and in those cases where you have an operator who runs a great business and knows everything that's going on on their property, and is vigilant about making sure that their premises and their parking lots are not havens for criminals and drugs and people who are inebriated, I fully support their applications. I do think that perhaps we need to relook or revisit the fact that we routinely approve substantial alcohol uses for big-box stores that do not provide security or do anything to deter the mischief on their premises, and it does create an unfair advantage. And from what I've heard, Mr. Commissioner Goines, you indicate you went out there, you visited, they run a great operation, and that says a lot to me, and this will see my support. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments, there is a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council, oh, I'm sorry, that is final action in the absence of appeal, and please note that Commissioner Flengas did abstain. Have a good evening. Now we go to items 28 and 29, related items. 28 SUP 39819, applicant owner D2801 Westwood Inc., for a proposed 7,399 square foot expansion of an approved 37,151 square foot liquor establishment tavern at 2801 Westwood Drive. And item 29 SDR 39818, to add 7,399 square feet, including a third floor with deck, to an approved 37,151 square foot sexual-oriented business, and for parking lot modifications.
Mr. Chairman, the subject property currently contains an existing sexually-oriented business with a parking area. The applicant amended the approved entitlements in January 2010 to add 11,734 square feet to the existing building, and to expand the tavern use. The applicant is now requesting that additional floor area be added, which includes modifications to the first and second stories, and a new third story with a roof deck. It would also include a drop-off area and a portion of the adjacent parking lot. The expansion would bring the total gross building area to 44,550 square feet. The additions and modifications are compatible with the existing structure in the surrounding area, and the expansion of the tavern use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses. Staff therefore recommends approval of the major amendments to the approved special-use permit and site development plan review with conditions. If denied, the site would retain the previously approved entitlements, but would not be able to expand further at this time. Item number 29 SDR 39818 was advertised with, as related to SUP 39818, but should have referred to related to item number 28 SUP 39819 on this agenda. Please note that there is an additional letter of concern for the item since publication.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Trusson, Deputy Director Wheeler, and fellow commissioners. My name is Thomas Penn. I'm an architect and project manager with Winston-Hennessy Architects. I want to thank staff for the review. It was a pleasure working with them. We do agree with all the conditions, and have no other comments, unless you have any questions.
Okay, this was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes. I called your representative a couple times this week, so that we could talk about this, not on the dais, but on the phone, but to no avail, no one returned my phone call. My concern is that, you know, when I think of the upper deck, I think of it being like at the Palms, or, you know, somewhere really up high, where people can't see what's going on up there. I want to know, on your upper deck, what's going to be going on, on this upper deck, and if it's going to be able to be, able to be seen from the street, meaning the freeway running north and south.
We did speak briefly yesterday. I was on a job site. I did get your message, and we spoke for about two seconds.
Two seconds.
We had a window meeting, so we both kind of were like chicks passing in at night.
Yeah.
I, we did submit a sightline plan, which is up on the screen now. I did a measurement from 100 to 150 to 200 feet out. We're installing a 36-inch tall parapet that will then have another two-foot balustrade on top of that, and behind that is a glass, eight-foot-tall glass panel, just like they have at some of the other open roof deck patios within the area.
So when somebody's driving south or north on the freeway?
That is blocked by the, there is a third-story expansion going up. That is totally blocked from the freeway.
Okay.
That is all hard structure on the west side, excuse me, on the east side of the open deck. You cannot see from the I-15. The patio's open to the west.
That would be west side open deck.
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right, well, that clears up my one question. Does anybody else have any other one?
Question I've got, because this is, this is, you know, based on the type of business that you have there, and having an outside deck, even with the walls or, because there is some visibility from hotel property to the south there, that could be visual, hotel property across the street. I drove by there today, again, going south, and, you know, it's not a clear visual shot, but you do see this elevation of the building, even when you put the structure in place. The waitresses that work in this area, the dancers, the, is this going to be an area that all the service in the club itself can happen out in this open-air deck?
No, my understanding is the operations for the open roof deck are for networking, socializing, getting out from the club, and-
That's kind of what I think, that's what I thought you'd say, but I-
The interior, interior operations will remain interior. This is just like other operations, where you can go out on the deck, they have chairs, your seating areas, you have a drink, relax.
No rooftop pole dancing.
Exactly, sir. Thank you very much for stating that. I did not want to.
Well, I mean, no, I think it's more, it's most appropriate to address it, because I, I think that's really the $64 question here.
It's a valid question, sir. My understanding of the operation is that the exterior operation is strictly for socializing, networking, they're going after conference business, convention business, and that's what this is for, and to take advantage of the view that they do have from that, from that property.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Goines?
I guess I'll have to ask the question, although I won't be networking, but maybe a backup on the freeway one evening. Or, security, is this railing or this balcony secured in some way that, because I'm just looking at your rendering, it looks like people are just standing out.
If you can go back to the section, please?
I'm pretty sure Dennis Robinson answered.
There is, if you look down at the section, there, you've got the, you've got the parapet that comes up about 30 inches, and then there is a 30-inch balustrade on top of that, and immediately behind that, on the inside of the property, is an eight-foot-tall glass structure, at the other corners. It wraps completely around the perimeter. There is no way that anyone can even get behind that. Sort of a trampoline.
Thank you.
Okay. No other comments, motion? You have time, go ahead.
While she's thinking, can I ask Director Wheeler?
Mind, that's what they were gonna put the prisoner, remember? All this comes back to me.
Commissioner Goines?
We're at, we're at, we're at three stories now, is, could this end up being a high-rise at one point, if they keep coming back in for floor five, six, seven, and eight?
Chairman and Commissioner, I mean, we-
Chairman and Commissioner, I mean, we can't anticipate future applications, but at this point in time, and it's not classified as a high-rise with this application.
Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion for approval on SUP 39819 following all of staff's recommendations.
There is a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval, including all their conditions. No other comments, please cast your vote.
And regarding number 29...
We got it. And that is approved? Item 29?
SDR 39818, a motion for approval following staff's recommendations.
And can I put a one-year review on that, please? Administrative review for, like, if something's gone wrong?
If I may, that would be on the SUP, the previous item as opposed to the SUP.
Then I want to go back and put a one-year review on the SUP.
Then let's... Motion would be to... If you would like to make a motion to rescind SUP 39819?
That'd be fine.
There's a motion to rescind? Please cast your vote.
Rescind it, please, and to add a one-year review, because my jury's still out on it. And then going back to number 29, right, Margot?
We're waiting for the clerk to...
Oh. I just, something's not sitting right with me, so I gotta follow my gut.
Can we do a hand count, please?
Sure.
We'll do the motion to rescind, please.
Okay. On the motion to rescind, please, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Aye.
So, my motion for SUP 39819 is for approval with a one-year administrative review.
There shall be a one-year administrative review after the issuance of the business license for the tavern expansion.
That's what I meant.
Okay. And we're going to go out since the machine is works out, let's make that a hand vote. All those in favor for the revised SUP 39819, seeing why I'm saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 29, SDR 39818?
For approval.
Okay. There's a motion for approval, subject all staff's conditions. No other questions, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on December 15th.
So this is not a final action?
It's not final action, okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good evening. Item 31, SDR 39810, applicant owner Rancho Altamira Homeowners Association, to allow 191 trees in a perimeter landscape buffer where 418 trees are required at the northwest corner of Lone Mountain, Indicada.
Hi.
One second, before we start, we're going to let staff read this in. We're going to let the applicants speak, and then anybody else wish to speak will line up on the walls here. We'll take you one after each other, so we get everybody involved. Staff.
Mr. Chairman, the existing number of perimeter landscape buffer trees and shrubs do not meet the requirements of the landscape, ball, and buffer standards in place at the time of the original approval. A minimum of 418 trees and 1,672 shrubs are required to meet the minimum standards. The proposed planning scheme will result in a perimeter with large gaps between trees and will not be compatible with the surrounding area. Staff is recommending denial of the request. Please note we received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Michael Schulman. I'm the attorney for the association. My address is 3556 East Russell Road. I have with me the president of the association, Chris Jarmillo from Jarmillo Landscaping, who's the landscaper, and one of his people. So the applicant is really the four of us. With respect to this issue, this association's 1,300 homes. It's 22 years old. When the developer built it, he only put in 191 trees. So basically, what has been going on for 22 years is there have been 191 trees. There are pine trees that have grown, so it's become necessary for the association to remove them because they're uprooting walls and sidewalks. The association's gone to Mr. Jarmillo, and with his arduous background, he suggested a type of tree that we can put in to replace them. We've now come to find out, we may be asked to put in an additional number of trees to make it 480 trees. Basically, for the association, this would raise their water bills from $4,500 to $16,000 a year, and it would raise their landscaping bills from $3,000 a month to $9,000 a month. Everybody's assessments would go up basically 20% per year. And I guess why we're here is we're being penalized for what the developer didn't do, and we're trying to do it right, and we show up and ask this variance, and we're being asked now to expend basically $110,000 more than we were going to expend to put trees in. It doesn't really seem fair to the association. With respect to the owners who are going to miss some shade that they might have had, first of all, the trees that we're going to put in will grow, and second of all, they can always apply to put something in their own yard to replace any shade. But basically, the trees that we're putting in will replace the 191 trees that are already there. We're sort of perplexed as to why we're being asked 22 years later to meet something that's 22 years old. I don't know. Jim, do you want to say anything?
Yes. I'm Jim Abbott. I'm president of homeowners association, and I'm... Excuse my voice, I'm battling throat and I have cancer right now, so if you don't understand what I say, just say so, and I'll say it again. In respect to the grouping of the trees, there are, as you can see by the pictures, there are open areas now, due to the way the builder planted the 192, 193 pine trees, he planted them in groups. So there's been existing gaps, as the staff says, for 22 years.
Chris, do you want to have anything about what we're going to put in?
The arrangement of the pine trees right now... I'm sorry, I'm Chris Jarmillo, Jarmillo Landscape, 9275 South Jones Boulevard. The current arrangement of the pine trees is clustered in groups of four, five, and seven trees, spread all throughout the four perimeter streets of the community with large gaps between those trees, between those sections of trees with just shrubbery and decorative rock. The proposed landscape plan would spread that out slightly more distributed than the current placement.
What type of trees are you planning on replacing these with?
We have four varieties that were planned as smaller statured trees than what the Mondell Pine, Pinus alderica, some of the largest trees in our valley when they're at their maturity. So what we have proposed is a much smaller statured tree based on its exposure to the sun and the heat of the roadway. So we have Holly Oak, Wilson Olive, Carob Tree, and Chast Tree are the four varieties that the Board of Directors of Rancho Altamira selected based on the criteria of... That they were looking for to accomplish keeping their walls and the sidewalks from lifting and cracking further.
Okay. Thank you. This... Go ahead, sure.
Just so you'll know, we have duly noted this subject in four previous HOA meetings with the homeowners. There's been approximately a dozen people show up at total of those four meetings in opposition to it. There was, on our website, there was about eight or 10 pieces of website chatter that was questioning it. I went on to the site and put out a talking points memo as to why we're doing it. We have a responsibility that the people that's going to be living there in 25 or 30 years as well as the people today. The response to my talking points memo was all supportive except for one. I've had six phone calls from people wanting to know about it. Five were supportive. After I explained it to them, one was not. We have close to 100 areas of the wall that are damaged right now. They're going to have to be repaired, and we're going to do that as we take the trees out so that we're not going back and forth getting permits to shut down Craig and Jones and that sort of thing.
Okay.
That number of opposition is about 1% of the homeowners association.
All right. Thank you. We're going to open this up, and then we'll give you a chance to respond to any questions raised. This is a public hearing. Any wish to speak on the side, please come forward. Please give your name, and we will limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Bill Tisdale. I live at 4541 Via del Sur Lane, within the heart of Rancho Altamira. I've been there for 15 years. My wife and I raised our family there. The trees that exist today are the trees that were there when we moved in 15 years ago, as he said, that's what the developer built. We see no reason why now we need to pull out those trees and replace new trees with the additional trees. I'm for a one-for-one replacement of the trees. I support what the board is trying to do, and right now with our water conservation issues and everything else, to jump up to almost 500 or 458 trees just doesn't make any sense to me. I do agree with removing the pines to protect the walls, to protect our infrastructure, and with one-for-one replacement. I was not able to send in my card, but I'm here to support it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Charles Bucky, 5212 Garcia Court. I live within the Rancho Altamira area. I guess part of my concern is pulling those trees out, and I agree with what the gentleman says. I don't know that we need any more than what's there. I'm concerned with pulling those pines out now. I suspicion the problem with the sidewalk and supposedly the fences is they were deep-watered, and that's a problem with the pine. I got a pine about two feet from a driveway that's not raising it at all, and that's... It's the way you water those things. And I don't, you know, I don't know about whether we should or should not take those out. I'd like to see them stay, but I might... I'd really like to see those trees stay if we could at all. Replace them with smaller stuff and other things, you know, it's going to cost us a lot of money, and it's probably going to cost us one way or the other, but I'd like to see those trees stay if it's all possible.
Thank you. That's quite all right.
There's two microphones there, so if you want to come up in groups of two.
My name is Judith White, and I'm representing three properties. I'm a partial owner of each of the three. And the people that own the properties have asked me...
Do we have your address?
I'm sorry. Do you want the addresses?
Your address.
Oh. My contact address would be 420 North Nellis, A3-243 in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
You need the property address? Okay. But their concerns are just what the gentleman in the gray jacket, two people ahead of me, had said, that with water, what it is now, costs going up with all of our services and utilities, and the management companies, and Rancho Altamira, which I've been involved with for many, many years. I have to go with the... I support the request. This is what the cards were that got sent in and got messed up at the post office, and I apologize for that. I have them with me, and I'm the one that has been, has had the authority to make the plea, and I am agreeing. The left-hand box is what we would... I was told to check, and that's what I'm speaking for.
Thank you. And if you have those cards and you would like to give those to the clerk, that's fine. We'll take your testimony either way. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Ann Smith, and I reside at 4516 Inez Drive in the Rancho Altamira subdivision. I've lived there for more than 15 years, and I represent three other homeowners. Our point is, we've attended one of the HOA meetings, and we understand the concern, and we are, of course, wanting to maintain our property by not experiencing damage to the walls and the sidewalks. Our concern is that there hasn't been sufficient consideration. There was a lawsuit about how the walls were installed and were poured improperly. So our concern is to maintain the look and the feel of the neighborhood. People who've been there since, there have been a lot of people who've lived there the entire time. I've been there over 18 years, and so our concern is to keep it looking like a mature neighborhood. I'm not in favor of increasing our water bill, and I'm not in favor of, just for the sake of complying to an old ordinance, increasing the number of trees. However, we don't think the trees all need to come out. We've asked for a consideration for a less drastic measure, but if, in fact, they choose to proceed with that, because of the... There's 20 years of growth on them, we would consider a delay in your decision so we could come up with a compromise, not necessarily the original 400, but enough trees to maintain the look of the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is George West. My address is 4817 Fox Warren Court, and I would recommend that these trees stay. There are ways to deepwater. You can put a piece of PVC pipe down to where the drip line will get the water deep down to the roots, so therefore they won't grow into the walls and into people's pools. Now, the trees that are there that are having problems with the walls, remove those trees, but leave the rest of the trees. I have no problem with that. And if you look at the drawing here that I got on the back of this card, it also looks like maybe they're trying to remove some of the palm trees. The palm trees have very shallow roots. So why are they going to remove these trees? The pine trees prefer... Provide a very aesthetic value to the subdivision, and also it's a barrier for noise. If you look at all the main roads that these are on, Craig, Decatur, Lone Mountain, and Jones, it's very noisy there. If you take away these trees, now you're going to have a lot of noise in the subdivision, not only to the people that live next to the wall, but those that live further into the subdivision. Now, there are ways that you could improve the watering on this, and I think these trees should stay, but if they want to increase the number of trees, so be it.
Thank you. Please.
Hi. My name is Jeanie Ahern. I live at 5734 Menito Circle, and I walk these walls every day with my dog. I'm from northern Minnesota. Those trees are 20 years old. If there is a problem with a pine tree, then we need to take it out. But if you go through this whole development within the community, we have walls that are cracking and tearing apart throughout the whole community. There has been more of an issue with the walls being poured incorrectly or whatever than there has been with trees. And I think it's a big mistake to take these pine trees out. As far as adding extra trees, our association fees are $125 a year. 25%... 20% is what? $150 bucks a year. So that is not a huge issue, I don't think, but that's not for me to say for anybody else. But those trees, I know those roots, they're not... You'd have to see it for yourself, but I think it's a mistake.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. My name is Eva West, and I live at 4817 Fox Warren Court, and I think the trees should stay. First of all, it took them so long to grow. They finally look nice. They provide an aesthetic value to the neighborhood. There is so much water runoff from where the drip system is. My husband had some pictures. He didn't show them to you, and you can see where the runoff is. If they put PVC pipe down so the water can go down to the roots, it will cause the roots to grow deep rather than sideways. Okay? And that will also stop the excess runoff that goes to the sidewalk and is just wasted. I think the trees should stay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Lindberg. I live at 4505 Inez Drive in Rancho Alomara, and I too believe that we should keep as many trees as we possibly can. One of the reasons for moving in that particular area is the look of the area. It's very inviting. Those mature trees make it a really inviting area, and to lose so many of them without further consideration, I think, would be a mistake. If we need to remove some and replace them, that's one thing, but I think we need to have a continuance here and do some more investigating. I'm not sure that the trees are the major issue that we have here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this side, and please come forward. Based on the comments, I can't imagine you have a lot of arguments here.
No, no, and just to give you some quick statistics, this is not an overnight project. The board's been working on this for a year and a half. We've looked at the watering issue of the 149 perimeter homes. There are 74 homes that are affected with pine trees. with pine trees. So again, we're talking less than one percent of the units. Of those seventy-four homes, forty-six have full grass backyards, so you know why the roots are going that direction. The city's not watering the sidewalk. We've had to replace a couple areas of sidewalk because of roots. There are many areas within this subdivision that have, on the interior walls that are cracking, where there are common area walls on the interior. We are addressing that, but that's a separate issue. And the one gentleman was right. We don't know why staff included that first, the first fifteen or twenty feet of the north and south entrances to the subdivision, but that's an error. The palm trees are not involved at all. It's strictly the four perimeter streets. At the board meetings, I've told these people the same thing. I empathize with you. I understand that losing your shade, but we have a long-term responsibility to the subdivision, and increasing to four hundred and eighteen trees is going to make it a three- or four- or five-year project, and from about a hundred thousand to around a hundred and twenty. That's not particularly the important issue, but the increase of water usage and the increase of our maintenance fees. When the Review Journal just reported last month, Lake Mead, that it's nineteen thirty-seven water level, there's no need for us to be increasing water usage at this time.
I'd like to add one thing, and then I think Chris would like to add one thing. I mean, it appears that out of thirteen hundred homes, eight or nine people showed up. None of them said, "We want four hundred trees." Some of them have said, "We don't want the pines removed," and that's really not what the issue is here tonight, even though the board has heard that from them. The issue is whether you're going to make us spend a substantial amount of money to put in an extra two hundred and fifty to three hundred trees, and that's really what this was about. So nobody came up here and said that's what they want. And then I wanted Chris to just explain about the maturity of the trees at this point.
At this point, being fifteen-year-old Mondale pine trees, they're at a fraction of their future growth. They're considered, at this point, an adolescent, and there's going to be quite a bit more growth from these trees, both in their trunk taper and root flare down to the ground. So the roots that are already beginning to cause damage, that have been recognized within the last few years of their property maintenance, recognized already to cause cracks, are going to accelerate as these trees mature and grow into what a Mondale pine, Pinus aldairica, is. It's a gigantic tree. It's considered a large canopy, large root system tree. We're big fans of the tree. We love them. It's one of the most successful trees in our valley, and it is not my position to want to take beautiful trees out, which most of them are. But when a tree is causing damage to your property, you have to take consideration, and this board's being very prudent, in forward-thinking and understanding the future size of these trees and the liability that they own as an owners' association that maybe some of their constituents don't understand completely. But they do own a liability, considerable liability with these trees in the places that they're in. So they're being very prudent and forward-thinking. Their plan for respect to the taking away a big tree and taking them all out, it's a phased plan. It's a three-year plan. So we'd be doing a third section at a time, which would allow for one section to be replaced, grow in a little bit, then the next section would follow a year later, and then the third section would follow. So there'd be a tapered effect. The idea of handling one at a time as they arise has been addressed, and doing so and taking that out, they wouldn't want to put back in a Mondale pine again. So for continuity, uniformity, and design, the best approach, long-term, for this board to consider is uniformity and growth uniformity, pattern, all of that. So from a horticultural standpoint and arboricultural standpoint, and long-term cost recognition for this board to consider, I'm asking you to support this for them.
One question I have for you, and then we'll turn it over to the commissioner here. Isn't there a process of root pruning?
Yes, there is.
Is that something that works for these type trees, or where you can, I mean, they did it in my neighborhood and turned into, in fact, I think your cousin was part of it or something.
Maybe so.
Pretty sure.
And we've done a considerable amount of that already, and at the fully mature size that these trees do become, there's the issue of them being unstable. So considerable height on these trees. You're going to have seventy-foot-tall trees, fifty to seventy feet wide, and taking off their anchors. At this maturity level, that is, has got them by, but they're thinking, as I said, farther down the road than that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Evans.
Yes, thank you. To see if I can frame this and understand it again. In the original building, which was twenty years ago?
Twenty-two.
Was that where they were required to put in four hundred and some-odd trees?
We're not sure of that.
There's no plans or drawings.
Let me ask the director.
Staff has history.
The answer is yes.
Okay. And only a hundred and ninety-some ended up being put in. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And your argument is these Mondale pines are intrusive and they're breaking the wall, and you want to replace them, not one-for-one or one-for-one, but with a smaller tree?
One-for-one, but with what type of tree?
One-for-one with the four other varieties.
Okay. And just, and I, let me just tell you my original take on this. I've voted on over ten thousand things before this commission. This is the first time I've ever seen anything like this. And I will tell you something. I did an Arbor Day project. I spent weeks dealing with arborists. I went to Boulder City. The species of trees that all of the professional arborists suggested that be used against the streetscape was the Mondale pine. So I'm not really quite clear about, it's fairly canonical. I don't quite understand the argument that you're going to put in another species of tree. Would there be some problems with some of these? Perhaps. I don't know whether they were planted too close to the wall, whether your wall was defective, whether or not the berm that you have there creates problems. I'm assuming also that there was perhaps once originally turf. Did you remove the turf where the trees were and you put in rock?
Yes, about five or six years ago, we took the grass out.
And that's the first thing that happens, is that you have to change the watering schedule and the way you water. Otherwise, you end up with those root problems, because the turf obviously requires a lot of water. The roots go deep. You stop watering the turf because you don't, and you're saving money, the roots start coming up, because they're not being properly watered. But I would suggest that there's an aesthetic aspect to this from my perspective. First of all, I really like them. If I bought a home, and that was one of the factors of why I bought that home, is that it was surrounded by a treescape that provides a windbreak, that if there's a canopy that shadows on my home, it can save thirty-five percent in cooling costs, and when it rains, it smells great. We're trying to create communities all throughout this city that look just exactly like what you have now and you want to get rid of. I don't get it. What I would suggest is that, as one of the speakers said, if you have individual trees that are problematic, or they're dealing with the wall, maybe deal with them individually. Perhaps you could have a little, maybe the wall could be moved one way or another. Maybe that tree has to be removed. But twenty years of growth, and you want to cut them down and put something else, and I'm sure it's not going to be of the same size and scope. I love Mondale pines, but I would think that, in a way, you got a real break. I mean, when they built the thing, you were supposed to have twice as many trees. For whatever reason, only a hundred and ninety-one got in there, and now you want to take them out. I don't quite, I don't fully follow it. And then the last thing is that, you know, just from my perspective, from an environmental perspective, these Mondale pines clean the air. And I don't know what the specifics would be, but the pines do a great job of that. And, you know, I appreciate your issue, but it sounds like we're getting involved in a homeowner's association issue. And quite frankly, this, unless you guys can convince me that we're totally off-track, this won't seem my support. In fact, if it does get approved, I'm going to be pretty angry.
Well, can I respond?
You have to ask the chairman.
Yeah, I guess, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the response is, you have to remember that this is a private corporation. It's a homeowners' association that elects a board that's charged with the responsibility of protecting the community. And if we have experts tell us, "This is why the walls are coming up. You're going to have liability, because these trees are going to start doing something, whether it's break those walls, God forbid if they cut the roots and they fall on something." That's why the board has chosen to do this. The reason we were here is because we were told we had to put in four hundred and eighty-one trees. Obviously, everybody would like to keep these particular trees, but our experts telling us, it doesn't work. And obviously, I'm not going to argue with an arborist, and I'm not going to argue with the knowledge you apparently have either, because it's not my area. But if we can't, basically what homeowners' association law says is the board of directors has a fiduciary duty to follow experts. And if we have an expert that says that, that's basically what they have to do, or they're going to get sued.
And I think we have an expert to make a zoning decision and a site plan and an aesthetic and follow the law there. I think this board is very discretionary and works with applicants in every way they can to find some reasonable solution or some common ground. But it sounds like, in my mind, your argument is you have a splinter, so you're going to cut off your foot. It doesn't make sense to me. I'm looking at these trees. They look incredibly healthy. Perhaps a few of them are problematic. I think you can deal with it.
I would respond, Mr. Chairman, by saying, "I don't think the trees aren't healthy. It's what they're doing to the walls."
I don't think it's what they're doing. It's the way they're perhaps being maintained. It's the position, and I do think there are alternatives. Thank you.
And I, at this point, we'll let the other commissioner. I really think what you have, you really have an association issue, not us as a land use issue, per se. I'm very concerned that we're, I mean, I'm surprised the board even, you know, you guys filed an application, because quite candidly, if you changed one or two trees, the world would go forward and we'd never hear about it again. But since this is before us, we're in a, if you ask me, does city code requiring four hundred trees, is it appropriate? I'm going to tell you absolutely. I think we owe it to the community to have these standards. But if you ask me with regard to your community and your neighborhood, I think your association needs to come to some kind of internal decision, how they want to do this. We're not going to be the ones deciding for your association. That was like a similar item we had earlier. We aren't in the, you know, land, private agreements and requirements of associations. How you guys meet your obligations as association, that's strictly your board and how you do that. We're here, if you ask us for a waiver for trees, I'm not here to support a waiver of trees. I have heard nothing here that says we shouldn't enforce our code. So in the absence of a lot of, some additional comments, I would recommend you guys obey this for a couple of weeks, work with staff and see where this goes, or try to work this out, or withdraw it and try to work it out with your boards, because I'm not, I still understand why you're here. I have no clue how you got here tonight.
A homeowner called Councilman Ross's office and complained, and we had to go through the, go through you folks, and we met with these gentlemen, and now we're meeting with you. We're just kind of going through.
Isn't it wonderful?
We've been told a bureaucratic process.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
With that explanation, I know now why it's before us. I, in a past life, was a park and recreation director for many years in the valley and know a tiny bit about Mondale pine trees, and also know of the landscaping firm you have representing your interests on the technical matters, and could not disagree with one thing that's been said. You know, what you've got here before us, if you simply look at this picture, you're looking at a picture of a twenty-year-old planning scheme, where they have a very narrow landscape border with a fairly severe elevation change. That elevation change in the wall there simply prohibits that Mondale pine from reaching maturity. Simple and sweet. The water consumption that's going on and the waste associated with it is a result of the angle that the trees are planted on, not the absence or presence of turf. You've got, if you're only having the walls and the sidewalks disrupted at this point, consider yourself fortunate. Those root trees, or tree roots, are going to get into the pools on the other side of that wall. They're going to destroy the irrigation systems and the circulation systems associated with the pools and the landscaping of the private property owners. And because those trees and the irrigation systems on the common areas, it's going to become the liability of the homeowners' association. Have you ever heard of the term of special assessment? Get ready for it. Someone trips and falls as a result of a sidewalk that's been damaged by the common area tree. Get ready for the lawsuits. I heard someone mention an annual homeowners' association fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I happen to live in Desert Shores that has the same type of landscaping scheme, except that we've got a wider buffer, and we have just gone through changing them out from turf and Mondale pines to more of a desert landscape scheme. This process cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars for the entire area, and we are now, when it happened, it was a subject of a lot of controversy and discussion. The net result after it's all in place, that I think to a person living in the entire area, they're all thrilled with the new landscape scheme. We did not do it all at once, bring in the chainsaws and take those mature trees down. They replace them as needed. When the wind comes up, and we frequently have fifty mile-an-hour winds, and if you've got a fifty-hour, mile-an-hour wind with one of these trees, they'll take them over, take the wall out. Also, it's not a matter of the tree root and the irrigation system as much as twenty-two years ago when the trees were planted. Chances are, they simply weren't planted properly. You've got to dig a significantly deep hole to plant that thing. Most of the time, when the people come in, they're planting trees in a project like this, they'll dig a three-feet hole, stick that baby in there, and move on to the next one. Last for the one-year liability period, but after a period of time, say twenty-two years, those, that is going down into probably a hard pan, colicci, and they don't have any place to go deeper with a taproot. They're going sideways. They're going to the street, they're going to the, you've got a situation in your hands that I think with the advice of your landscape consultant, you come up with a proper approach. You know, to go back because some person comes forward and says, "We want the full four hundred and eighteen trees," it's absolutely legally justified in them making the request. Whether that request could ever be complied with in a financially reasonable fashion, there's no question it could not be. Anybody that came up and spoke tonight didn't say, "We want our four hundred and eighteen trees." They have no idea what kind of money they're talking about to do that, not only in terms of initial installation, but ongoing maintenance and water costs. You know, I think that because we now understand why it's before us, they have to request a site development review with elimination or modification of the condition. It all makes perfect sense. What seemed good twenty-two years ago when the original site plan was approved, using standards from twenty-two years ago, it's there. If you doubt what I'm saying, take a drive along Rainbow down in Spring Valley. You see all the tree wells that are there that are empty. You see the upheaval that's caused to the sidewalks, the walls that are caved in, the problems that they've had there over the years with the irrigation systems and the root systems getting into the backyards, destroying the pools, on and on and on. This is what you've got in your future. Spring Valley is probably a ten-year-old of the development than what you have, and they've lived through the corrections that were necessary. That's what's on your horizon, unless you do something about it. What's being proposed tonight makes perfect sense to me. End of speech. Thank you very much.
Good sir.
Okay. Ms. Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counsel, I'm reading a protest postcard from the Harmon Family Trust that says, "This is an attempt by the HOA to remove perfectly healthy trees. The HOA won a lawsuit regarding the walls, and we're supposed to have used that money to repair them." Now they're blaming the trees. They are irrigating them incorrectly. Can you tell me something about this construction defi lawsuit?
I'm going to have to let the president...
I'm going to have to let the president, we didn't represent the association in that suit, so I'm going to let the president respond.
That is correct. We did have, we did win a lawsuit of about $700,000 on construction defects, but that's not what we're here for. If you'll notice, it doesn't show up very good in one picture your staff has taken, but we've had eight or nine automobile accidents that plowed through the wall. Everywhere those have happened, I've taken pictures, and I can tell you that the wrought iron posts.
The rebar.
The rebar is where it's supposed to be. The lateral reinforcements is where it's supposed to be in those eight or nine areas that we've had automobile accidents.
My question is, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but...
So, the wall money is to repair the construction of the walls, that's a whole separate difference than what we're talking about here on replacing the trees.
Well, you...
We're not using the wall money to replace these trees.
No, that's not my question. That's not my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My question is, was there a construction defect suit?
Yes.
Did you receive a settlement to repair the wall?
Yes.
And did you?
We have repaired in some spots, but the tree, wherever there's cracks, there's trees. Where the walls are cracked, there's pine trees. And we've got over 80 areas documented that need to be repaired from the trees cracking. Everywhere there's cracks, there's trees. Now, we've got 190 pine trees, and we've got over 80 areas documented that may not make sense to you, but the way the builder grouped the trees at like eight or 10 feet apart, there could be two trees and one crack, or there could be a section that I know of where there's eight or 10 trees and there's three cracks. So, that could be a little misleading on the numbers.
Well, there was a comment earlier about prudent and forward-thinking, and I just have to say that if you're really going to be prudent and forward-thinking, then it seems to me that the thing you would do is put back the number of trees that were supposed to be there, so that in 20 years, the residents in this community can enjoy the same beauty, because this is a beautiful neighborhood. I know the pictures don't show everything, but I'm looking at this, and those trees are absolutely beautiful. A lot of communities would love to see those. But if you feel like you have to pull them out, then let's put back the number of trees that the city's asking you to put in, so that those homeowners in 20 years are enjoying it the way the homeowners are now.
And I have no argument against that, other than the cost, and we are willing to do that, but we just would rather not.
Well, for us, we, we're not here to consider the cost, we're here to consider whether or not this is an appropriate land use.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts? I think, I guess I'll throw this out one more time, before we all have something we don't like, is I would recommend that you possibly consider holding this, to work with staff to, because I'd like to understand this item better. You know, one says the walls, you know, isn't, is a construction defect, is a construction defect. Is it trees, isn't it trees? Is it, we want mature trees, we don't want mature trees. I would like to see if we're going to have an application for us, come with us and tell us what is a real solution that the neighborhood's on board. Because I, what I see right now is just a request to have a new plan, less than what our code requires. And I, I'm not, I'm not here to say how you got there. I really, this is one neighborhood, I couldn't, in good conscience tell you, I saw this one was early on being built, but I would, I'm not comfortable with what's before us, and I'm not sure you'll like the outcome.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
Without consulting with my client, we're happy to meet with staff again to talk about it. The issue remains, I think what Commissioner Trowbridge said, even if we change that one for one, whether or not, our arborist has told us not to use these pines. So, I'm happy for us to sit with staff and meet with them and postpone this, if that's okay with you. Is that acceptable to my client?
I don't know why we have to meet with them. I mean, if we have to put 418 plus 563 shrubs back, I mean, we hate to do that from a cost standpoint to the homeowners, but, but we can. I'm not trying to be belligerent, but I don't, I don't, I don't understand the full bureaucratic process of it.
And if I could say one more thing, I guess, if you were to vote against us, the vote is not, we can't, we can't take out the pines, the votes we have to put in 481 trees. I mean, that would seem to me what we're talking about.
I guess that's why I'm not sure why they're here, because of the fact, and I agree with you, and I'm still confused, and I'm just a lawyer, but I'm just confused on it. Do they currently have 191 trees?
Yes.
So, why are they, the only reason they're here is because they want to change them out to something different.
If I may, if I may, the issue is, once we take, once this comes to our attention, like any code enforcement matter, right? So, it's a code enforcement matter, it comes before us, we have to look at what's approved.
But you granting the 191 trees doesn't allow you to, them to change them out to something different. I mean, they can do that if they want to, but...
That gets them to an allow, then, then the city can say, they are approved for that number of trees, and then it's...
And then it's up to them to do what they want to.
And they submit a plan, and then that gets approved. Then that way, we have an approved plan. Right now, I don't have an approved plan.
You have a non-conformist plan.
I have, exactly correct.
Okay.
Just so that no one thinks that this, them getting the 191 also allows them to tear them down, and the city's allowing them to do that, that's their own decision.
That's what I'm about. Yeah, as I understand it, there's no decision. I think that's something between your board and God. You know, I mean, I really believe that's, as homeowners' associations go, that's really where you're headed. But I really believe that if you're asking me, and you're going to get rid of the, if you're telling me, hey, we're going to put in a different tree, smaller tree, different canopy, different change, and I want the same effect to meet our code, and you wanted to compromise, I think there's some number of trees greater than what you're asking for right now, that would still give me the comfort that I've met the commitment to the neighbors and the residents of your association.
We haven't been in the position for you to sit down with staff and say, hey, how about 225, or 240, or 250? So, I, again, again...
That's, that's why I'm asking you to take this opportunity, otherwise we can, you know, we'll call for a motion.
I don't know what that magic number is, and I don't have, I don't have a quorum of the board of directors here, there's only two of us, so I, you know, I can take that back to the board and come up with a number, but I, I can't do it on my own without the board.
If I sat on your board, and I was an officer of a homeowners' association board, I'd take the opportunity, it takes more time, because otherwise, your counsel knows what's, where this is going to go.
Yeah, we're fine to do that, but I think he's correct in that he can't do it alone. We'll have to go back to the board and see what they're willing to do, if you want to postpone it. But again, I think what the city attorney said is 100% accurate.
Mr. Chair, could I?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Counsel, in all this talk about trees, you've been offered an olive branch tonight, and I suggest you take that, because I can't support this.
Well, I'd suggest it to my client as best I can in public, that we do that.
And I wanted to be...
But we're here, we're here to address your request.
And as a president of the board, I'm willing to make that, make a compromise number, but we haven't...
So, we need the time, is what we're being told.
And for what it's worth, we need to be cost-effective in this economy, because not everybody can just afford to, you know, have all their dues and everything go up. And when all these trees are beautiful and standing, I mean, I think you need to think about what's here and how to preserve it. And this is really ridiculous.
Okay. And I just, before you make a motion or whatever, I wanted to be very clear, I absolutely disagree with some of the statements that were made, and I think there are solutions. These trees would be, to replace them even comparable, would probably be $11,000 apiece. Mr. Jarmelo, isn't that a fair statement? Tree of that size, of that scope? Let alone the cost of removing it, the root?
Five to 10, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you've got a fortune in mature trees there, try to save them.
Then, if I'm hearing correctly, what I'm going to go ahead and do is entertain a motion to hold this to January 25th, if somebody would make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Is a motion to hold this, you're in agreement with that date?
We, yes, we accept that. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Motion is for, to hold it, please cast your vote. And that is held, and we appreciate everybody's time, and we're going to take a short break right now, and be back for some more fun.
That's right.
Here's my question. If it's like cost issue, how much have our only owners gone up in the last two years? Zero! Oh, nobody can afford it. Tell me. He said there's 14, 15. I figured out what I'm on my computer. Times 125, that's 137,500 dollars. I said if everybody's owners just $12,500 a year and nobody can say, nobody, you can't tell me you can't say $2.50 a month. You can't tell me that. Okay. That will go up to 167,000. No, leave it what it is. And as the trees just move and replace that. Like the gentleman said, you got a hay mail, don't come. No, two issues here. Are you referring this to? See where you have. Replace this one.
Regards to that. Yeah. If I can just hold on for a pair of phrases.
I mean, I can always, you know. Water snacking. This is for item number 32. It was given to me right at the beginning of the meeting and they wanted to include it in the record. They didn't say that they were going to speak, they just wanted us to take it, so. I'll just mention that we've received an entry into the record. Maybe there was some that I missed.
Well, I can't, I can't see.
No. I'm not taking it. I mean, he was there. I gotta tell you, probably wasn't a good one. Whether he was trying to. Just, I'm on my own. No, I'm not here to record, I'm not here to tell stories, I'm not here to say anything kinder, you know.
Okay, we're ready to begin. We're gonna go to item 32 now. TXT 38353, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. Discussion of possible action to amend Title 19.14 and Title 19.20 to define standards for building wrap signage.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the first text amendment that you have before you this evening is to add a new type of signage to the city's sign code. The sign is called building wrap signage and it's defined as being a large format sign that is printed on vinyl mesh or other similar material with or without text and is adhered or affixed directly to a wall's surface. You have some examples in the slide that you have in front of you there. Two examples from the strip and one from a special sign district in the city of Los Angeles. In terms of the requirements to have building wrap signage, there are a number of threshold requirements that must be met. First of all, the building to which the signage is to be affixed must have a minimum of 10 stories in height and 200,000 square feet in building area. Both of those requirements must be met. Next, it must be a commercial building. In other words, it cannot have any residential uses in the structure. And then third, there cannot be any existing off-premise signage on the site where the building wrap signage is proposed. As we have written the text amendment, it would only be allowed in the C1 and C2 zoning districts and building wrap signage would be excluded from the off-premise sign exclusionary zone, which takes up most of the western portion and the northwestern portion of the city. Because there is a concern that the building wrap signage would have impact to residential neighborhoods, we've added some language to protect residential neighborhoods. Number one, the signage cannot be oriented towards an adjacent residential neighborhood or an abutting residential property. And then secondly, any lighting that is used for the building wrap signage must meet residential adjacency lighting restrictions already contained in our code. In terms of the standards for the building wrap signage itself, no more than one per building elevation with a maximum of four per property. They must be 2,400 square feet in size. The reason for that is that in order to adequately have the building wrap signage, you must have the surface area. And this way, we prevent some of the temporary signs that you might see, like the banners and things like that, trying to come in under a building wrap sign. Also, the signage cannot extend above the roof line or beyond the walls. It's intended to be integrated with the building itself. In order that we don't have any of the building wrap signage obscuring the pedestrian level of the building, it must be a minimum of 15 feet above grade and then cannot extend more than two feet from the face of the building itself. We are also proposing to allow off-premise messages as part of the building wrap signage. However, any off-premise messages must go through a special use permit process, just like any other off-premise signage in the city of Las Vegas. There are, however, certain exemptions for separation and the size limit because building wrap signage in its very nature is applied directly to the walls of buildings. Some of these standard billboard requirements would not apply to these signs. We have had a letter that was submitted to us right at the beginning of the meeting from Clear Channel Outdoor Communications. We have entered that letter into the record. What it basically states is that Clear Channel and the other billboard companies would like to meet with staff prior to this item going to city council, just so staff can clarify some of the issues relative to the proposed text amendment. We are more than happy to do that. That concludes my presentation and I will go ahead and take your questions at this point in time.
Okay, this was advertised public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here on behalf of Lamar Outdoor Advertising. I too have a letter I'd like to submit into the record without reading it. I'll just summarize it real quickly. It's pretty much the same as Clear Channel's. We too would hope that there would be a meeting with the industry prior to it moving forward to city council. Thanks.
Okay.
Good evening, Russell Rowe, 10-100 West Charleston here on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation. Boyd Gaming has some concerns with this ordinance. We as well would like opportunities to work with the planning commission and staff in the city council on this ordinance before it moves forward. We would suggest working with the downtown business community, Fremont Street Experience Board, perhaps have this run through the downtown design review committee since they tend to manage signage in the Fremont Street area. We do have a number of concerns, obviously this is just an introduction, so I don't think there's a need to go in detail. But we would request the ability to work with the city on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing though, go ahead and close public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions? Commissioner Evans?
Couple of quick questions for staff. Would the design standards of Symphony Park preclude the use of a building wrap?
Symphony Park has its own sign standards in the design standard manual. So at this point in time, I don't believe that they would be permitted to have building wrap.
Conceivably, that would be negotiable or subject to change, sounding concrete correct?
What would need to happen is that the Symphony Park Design Standards Manual would need to be amended to include this type of signage as permitted within the Symphony Park.
And this is primarily citywide, so with some exclusions with regard to residential adjacency, is that correct?
That is correct, but again, buildings must meet the minimum threshold requirements of 10 stories and 200,000 square feet. So that does significantly limit the number of buildings that would be eligible for building wrap signage.
And just as a, throw this out there, I, one of the examples that were used was the Mirage where I think it advertises the Cirque du Soleil Beatles show. And I don't recall what the other one was. But I am concerned that we open ourselves up to a Pandora's box of unintended consequences. We can't regulate content. So clearly, that would mean any building that meets this threshold would be able to pretty much put anything up there that isn't considered, I guess, pornographic, is that correct?
You are correct in that we cannot regulate the content of signage. And as you have stated, as long as it's not pornographic in accordance with the city's municipal code, then they would be able to permit up.
So are we taking architecture where we're trying to enhance the level of architecture and making them billboards, skyscrapers that are billboards?
That is one way to view it. One of the important aspects of this is that the signage should be more or less coordinated with the architecture of the building itself, which is why we put in the language relative to be limited to not extending above the roof line of the building or beyond the walls of the building. And so it is important that the signage be integrated with the architecture of the building. Now, the examples that you've seen there relative to the Mirage, they do a fairly good job of that in terms of restricting it to below the parapet of the building and below that, excuse me, above the cornice line of the windows that they have there. So I think that is something that's important to look at. One of the other things to take into consideration is that signage that falls within the downtown signage districts would have to be reviewed by the downtown design review committee. And so there is some additional level of review within the downtown area.
But other than, say, the Symphony Park, if the design standards won't allow it, if they were, conceivably could, say, the World Market be an entire face or the entire structure be covered to advertise, say, Red Bull or something?
That is a possibility. Again, any off-premise messaging must be approved through a special use permit. So there is a distinction there. If the World Market Center were to put up any type of building wrap signage relative to a tenant that they have within the building, a furniture manufacturer or the like, they would be permitted to do so without a special use permit. However, once they get into the territory where they are advertising products or services or ideas that are not available on site, then they do have to go through the special use permit process.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question on practical application of this. And it's very specific. You know, obviously, this has to be a 10-story building. And one of the bullet points you had up there is it can't be oriented towards a residential area. That becomes a very loose cannon, so to speak, for anybody to raise trouble with it because, you know, if you're putting it on a building that's at least 10 stories high, some residential area is going to be able to see it. So, you know, I would just say if you're gonna go forward with this ordinance, you make some kind of correction on that because I don't see how you're going to avoid that one at all.
Commissioner Trubisky?
Yeah, I think I would support the thought that this be referred to people in the industry to let them take a look at it as well as the downtown groups. My specific concerns are that Section 2C12 says no off-premise signs shall be allowed on a parcel where building wrap signage has been approved. And then we go to E3, it says off-premise messages. Building wrap signage that is being utilized for off-premise messages. I think there's some subtlety that I'm missing there between an off-premise sign and an off-premise message.
They are one and the same.
So in one case, you cannot have them, period, and the other one you can, but it requires a special approval?
One of the things, in order to prevent sign clutter, if you will, if a property is going to have building wrap signage, then it cannot have an off-premise billboard. And then conversely, if you have a billboard on the property, then you cannot have the building wrap signage. So it's important to distinguish that you either choose to have a billboard or the building wrap signage, but you're not permitted to have both. Now, one of the things to understand is that you may have off-premise messages as part of your building wrap signage. But again, that's in situations where you don't already have a billboard on the property.
So if the Golden Nugget wants to building wrap and advertise Elvis's appearing down on the strip someplace, they could do it?
If they obtain a special use permit, yes.
Yeah, I think that's something that needs to be talked about in great length.
And, you know, additionally along that line, if a building's, and this is the only one that comes to mind, is the Southern Nevada Water Authority building where there is a billboard on that building, that building would not qualify for building wrap in this scenario. If it met all the height and other things, and I'm not saying it, it does or doesn't.
That would be correct because they already have a billboard on the property.
Now, the other question I have, and I think maybe the industry has probably got some input on this and I'm sure everybody's got an opinion, but I understand if you look at the Mirage with, you know, their love show, that show may run two years and may run a lifetime, who knows? But it's tied to something there. If somebody put up an off-premise advertising, is there a mechanism, I don't know how long this vinyl lasts or whatever, where it gets tattered, becomes a constructive eyesore? Is there a way to put a time limit on this? And likewise, if there's going to be a special use permit, is it for one sign with changeable messages or it's one-time event?
In terms of the time limit, let me address that question first. Currently, as written, it does not have a time limit in it, you are correct. It would be possible to perhaps establish a time limit that the messages may be changed out. Or if there is a concern about, because these are vinyl for the most part or somehow adhered to the building, there could be maintenance language added to this particular section of the sign code saying that building wrap signage must be maintained in a certain state, otherwise taken down. So there's the possibility of adding language to this portion of the code relative to maintenance to make sure that we don't have building wrap signage that is beginning to be tattered or becomes a hazard on the building face or is out of date or faded, et cetera. Let's see, your second question was, I'm sorry, Mr. Trubisky.
I lost it myself.
While you're thinking of that.
No, this is the time limit.
Oh.
Or no, the issue of whether.
These could be temporary and billboards. Like. These could be temporary and billboards. Like, if there were to be off-premise messages for the building wrap signs, they would be much like a billboard where you are approving the sign for off-premise messages and that you don't have to come back each time you change out that billboard. These would be the same in that if we are granting a special use permit to this building wrap signage, that they would not have to come back to the city every time they change that message.
Okay.
Commissioner Evans? I guess a little bit more clarification. I'm trying to look at the potential consequences of this. The planning and building department is moving to the atrium. With the atrium, which is, I believe, more than 10 stories, would that be eligible?
No, in our study of buildings across the city, the atrium building is only nine stories in height, would not qualify.
So it's unlikely we're going to have a nine-story, 10-story thing saying, "Discount lawyers." They can't go beyond that. Unlike the, unlike the Strip, where, you know, like for instance, the example that we've used is the Mirage, where I think that maybe even that was intended in the original architectural design to put that Mylar, whatever, that advertises the Cirque Love show. I have to think perhaps it was intended or designed that way. A couple of the others, they look like afterthoughts, but it seems to me they all advertise or promote something within that property. It sounds like what we're doing is allowing advertising. We're allowing buildings to become billboards. And I'm curious of who's driving this. If the casinos aren't particularly driving it, and if we're not, the billboard industry doesn't seem to be the drivers, who wants it? And why would we want to consider something that has potential consequences that, in my mind, would deter any good architectural development? If you're going to spend a lot of money building a great building that's more than 10 stories, why would you want to cover it in advertising? It defeats the purpose in my mind.
And as someone with an architectural background, I would agree with you, Commissioner Evans, relative to the architecture. In looking at the sign, special signage districts in the Los Angeles area, for example, along the Sunset Strip and in Hollywood, they have as part of their signage, or at least I've seen in some of the examples of signage there, for example, an advertisement for, you know, iPods on a building where that particular merchandise is not sold. Or again, because this is LA, they have advertisements for movies on buildings where there are not movie theaters. And so in other sign districts, you do see off-premise messages that, again, depending on how they are done graphically, can be attractive, and how they are adhered to the building, don't upset the architecture of the building. But you are correct that it is a very important relationship to look at how the sign relates to the building.
Thank you. And, you know, there are some examples of where this functions very well. I mean, if you look at Times Square, their signing, most of those are off-premise messages, whether they be digital, whether they be vinyl, whether they be shrunk to the building, all of them have a message. But somehow, it's, at least in that forum, it's inherently a better quality message. It is a top-level corporate message. It's, and this is nothing against the billboard industry, but, you know, we don't need to have fans of butts out there. I mean, I think we could, we can make a real mess of this in our downtown area if we, if we don't look at our cultural quality that we want to create in downtown Las Vegas. Because it-
Well, and that's kind of my-
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're trying to, you know, dictate message or something, but we need to make this, since this, the scale of this is so grand, it's not a 14-by-48-foot postage stamp. I mean, 2,400 feet's a pretty dynamic board. And the side of, let's say, the Bank of America Building could look pretty bad if it, with the wrong kind of sign. I mean, we could just, might as well-
But that's my issue.
Call it a swap meet. But, but I think we have to try and incorporate as many safeguards as we can if we're going to approve something along this line, or-
And I would agree, but if the law does not allow us to incorporate those safeguards by not being able to legally regulate content, where does that put us? That puts us not with a 24-foot billboard, but with a 24-story billboard. That, those are my issues. I, I really don't have that much of an issue with a major unrestricted gaming property being able to do some wrap thing if it meets certain standards, but when you start in with the off-site advertising and we have absolutely no ability to say no to the content, you know there's going to be problems down the road. Just thoughts.
There's, there's opportunities down the road. I don't know if there's problems. Commissioner Trubisky?
Ready for a motion? I doubt if this proposal was put together in a vacuum and probably have worked with all the different groups, but at the same time, I still think we ought to give the industry and some of the gaming corporations one last opportunity to get their input. But it be done with such a fashion that there be some kind of a deadline, you know, just, you've had it on your desk for six months and we just really haven't gotten to it is, doesn't move us along very fast. So I'm, I'm ready, if there's no other discussion, to make a motion that we hold this item for 30 days and invite the industry and the gaming corporations to get their concerns on the table in a prompt fashion so that we can move this item along.
Well, let's ask the people here representing two of those factions, is, you guys prepared to roll up your sleeves and spend 30 days and get as many answers together as you can?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing holidays, so I'm willing to go 60.
Okay, then let's make it 60 days and, I mean, if that's-
You're on.
It'll be held till the January 14th meeting. Any other comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, January 25th.
What's the, what's the date again?
January 25th.
January 25th, that's. Okay. There is a motion. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is held, and if you're going to reach out to the stakeholders involved and anybody here, please give their information to Flynn so he can make sure you're on the list as well.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Now we go to item 33, TXT 39750, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to merge LVMC Title 18 subdivision regulations and Title 19 zoning code into a unified development code, UDC with no number, for the City of Las Vegas.
Bear with us one second. We are having a technical difficulty-
That's quite all right.
-and we'll have a PowerPoint here in just a moment.
We're ready to go. She's a history buff. She, this whole technology thing is a good for her.
I know, it's way over my head. I should be doing a carving or something. Good evening, everyone, Commission and Chairman. Tonight, I will be talking to you about the Unified Development Code, which again, is the merging of Title 18 subdivision code and the Title 19 zoning code. My purpose tonight is to recap some of our accomplished goals and objectives and provide a summary of the public meetings and customer review process, also a brief summary of the chapters that you have already seen, and information regarding the remaining chapters of the code that have not been discussed. And hopefully we will receive a positive recommendation to move forward with this item. So some of the, for the benefit of the public, some of this may be a little bit repetitive to you, so please bear with me. The goals and objectives of the Planning and Development Department as we move forward with this was to create a more user-friendly document. That was top, that was the top goal, was to really make it easier for developers and users and internal staff to be able to read and understand and use the document. And we also wanted to translate the existing zoning categories into a graphic format. That goes along with really making it much easier to understand. Streamline the zoning categories and introduce walkability and sustainability concepts into the community development and streetscape standards and reformat for internet use. In preparation, staff researched legal issues, case studies, books, journals, publications about form-based codes, smart codes, and transit-oriented development. We compiled existing conditions. We reviewed the Nevada revised statutes and City of Las Vegas documents pertaining to planning, development, and sustainability to check to make sure that there were no impediments to sustainability or any of the other revisions that we wanted to make. We completed the Title 19 sustainability audit, and we also completed the Title 19 survey, which was completed by City of Las Vegas staff and external users. And a lot of the feedback that we got from that survey went into the changes of the document. And ultimately, we, we have now a profoundly reorganized and reformatted code where, again, Title 18 and Title 19 was merged. We placed the zoning category descriptions and design and development standards into one place, again, consolidating all of the information to make it as easy as possible for users. We included sustainability standards throughout the document and introduced the complete streets chapter with the connectivity ratio and traffic and transportation plan. So we feel that we met many of the goals that we started out with. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize all of the people and groups that assisted us throughout this process with their extremely valuable feedback. And one of the groups was the customer feedback group, and the participants on this group included your own planning commission chairman, Truesdale, members of the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association, the National Association for, thank you, Industrial and Office, I don't know why, I just went out of my head, the Regional Transportation Commission, Newland Communities, Lukase Galati Architects, Kemfer Crowell, and Howard Hughes Development Corporation and Strategic Solutions. Additional external partners were Las Vegas Green Council, Southern Nevada Health District, the Stormwater Quality Management Group, and the Southern Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. Internal partners were the Public Works Department, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, Office of the City Attorney, Office of Sustainability, and of course, P&amp;D Senior Staff. So prior to this meeting, we have had three neighborhood meetings. We had two in October and one earlier this month, where we had educational materials and staff was on hand to answer questions from the public. On September 23rd, staff presented to you Chapters 1900, General Provisions, 1912, permitted uses, 1914, non-conforming uses and structures, 1918, definitions and measures, and on October 21st, we presented 1906, residential districts, 1910, special area and overlay districts, and 1916, applications and procedures. And before I move forward with the chapters that we will be discussing today, I want to make sure that there are any comments about these chapters, or anything that you may have thought of since the last presentations. Anything? Okay. So tonight, we'll be reviewing Chapter 1902 subdivision standards, 1904, complete streets, and 1908, commercial and industrial standards. 1902 subdivision standards, there was very little substantive changes to this chapter initially, or ultimately, this was just a reorganization of material that was currently found in Title 18, and the reformatting for visual clarity. Any questions on that one? Okay. 1904 is the complete streets chapter that is newly introduced into this document. And before I get into the specifics, I just would like to go over the concepts behind complete streets. Complete streets are designed and operated to allow safe access for all modes of transportation and users, and a complete street would include things like sidewalks, landscaping, bike lanes, special bus lanes, accessible transit stops, frequent crossing opportunities like mid-block crossings, median islands, accessible pedestrian signals, and curb extensions. All of these things compound to improve pedestrian safety, they address sustainable development, and they foster healthy communities. In addition, they encourage multimodal transportation, reduce vehicle miles traveled, and additional trees in the amenity zone contribute to air quality, provide a comfortable pedestrian environment, and increase the lifespan of sidewalks and pavement and energy efficiency to buildings. So some of the formatting changes, again, very similar to what you've seen throughout the document, a greater use of graphics and figures and tables to illustrate all of the standards. So that's pretty consistent throughout. The substantive changes include the introduction of the street trees section, a clear definition of the expectations for the amenity zone, consolidation of requirements for streetscape and street trees, introduction of the land use matrix, which is meant to demonstrate compatible land use and transportation combinations, refined road network requirements, introduction of the connectivity ratio for new development, introduction of the traffic and transportation plan, which works to ensure adequate connections from proposed development to more connected grid street network. And it is very important to note that all of these elements in this chapter are equally important to the creation of lasting, sustainable, connected communities, exactly what we set out to, to accomplish when we started this project. So all of this starts with the streets. One of the elements that we've worked very closely with Public Works and the customer feedback group are the revised street schematics. So the idea behind this is that the right-of-way stays the same. However, the asphalt is reduced, which allows additional space for the enhanced amenity zone, which would include the sidewalk and the trees. The right-of-way will be able to accommodate multimodal, non-vehicular traffic, such as bike lanes, mixed pedestrian and bicycle paths, and sidewalks that are clear of obstructions for children, the elderly, disabled, and other pedestrians. It's all part of the concept of connectivity, which provides safer and quicker routes for pedestrians, bicycles, and alternative modes of transportation. It's consistent with the current Title 13 street sidewalks and public spaces, public places language. A very important part of the revised street sections are the enhanced amenity zone, and the images on the slides show, are an example of what we are envisioning with the enhanced amenity zone. Trees would be required along all new streets, and, and space would also be provided in the planting strip for shrubs or foliage or utilities, all of this towards leaving the sidewalk clear for pedestrians. In addition, in some cases where you would have a subdivision with a wall that backs up to the street, that's where the shrubs and sort of low, low-lying foliage would be required in order to kind of break up that, that heat effect as you're walking along the sidewalk that you might be getting off, off of the wall. So you would have the nice shade coming from the trees on one side and a sort of landscape buffer on the other side. The land use matrix that I mentioned earlier, this is a large component of, of the Unified Development Code, supports encouraging higher-density land uses next to higher-intensity streets. So we are introducing this matrix, which helps suggest to the builder the types of zoning districts that we would like to see next to certain types of streets. So as an example, the residential zoning district, which is outlined in red, you can see that under the 120-foot street and the 100-foot street, the rectangles are blue. And the blue color means that this is not really a compatible street, combined with, with the adjacent land use, which is residential, and so mitigation may be required. This is during the application process when they're discussing with staff, you know, how, how this, how this could be mitigated. Staff, staff would perhaps say, you know, maybe we need additional landscape buffer or something between this higher-intensity street and the residential- between this higher-intensity street and the residential use. So these are suggestions about, you know, what we would like to see. I apologize, this didn't quite format correctly. Now I'll explain the connectivity ratio. This is, this helps the concept that the roads are really the framework for sustainable development. For the walkability concept to work, it's important to make the physical connection between the roads and to the neighborhoods that they serve. And it's really important to continue that connectivity concept into the individual neighborhoods. We are proposing a connectivity ratio for residential subdivisions. And this is a mathematical calculation that helps the applicant reach a desired connectivity level within the development by dividing the number of links, which are street sections, by nodes, which are intersections. And I have a graphic that might help explain that a little bit better. Communities with higher connectivity ratios have fewer vehicle-related fatalities and injuries, reduced vehicle miles traveled, and reduced vehicle speed as a result of more intersections. It also promotes pedestrian and bicyclist safety. So again, all of these things are connected together. What I'd like to point out on this graphic is that the graphic on the top left shows you what a typical subdivision that would be received looks like. You have one entrance in and out of the subdivision, you have quite a few cul-de-sacs, and those are considered nodes. So we think that with just a few minor changes to that subdivision, one more entrance and perhaps another pedestrian link to, maybe not a vehicular entrance, but a pedestrian gate can easily increase that connectivity ratio to 1.25. So 1.3, we feel is pretty attainable. So again, this is, it requires a little bit of figuring, but we think that this is an easy way to kind of determine how we can make sure that these communities are connected to each other and to the external streets. Actually, before I move forward, I want to make sure there are any questions about the connectivity. I know there were a couple of questions.
Your rendering here shows what appears to be a continuation of the walled communities. Is that inaccurate? I thought we were moving away from those.
At this time, we are, we have not made any steps to move away from the walls. What we have really focused on is creating the connections so that there are more opportunities and options available for people if they want to walk to destinations. So if you have a connection through the wall, then it sort of meets that purpose. Any other questions? No? Okay. We're also introducing the Traffic and Transportation Plan, which is a return to the open grid-style roadway network. The grid provides enhanced connectivity within neighborhoods by requiring 60-foot minor collector streets every quarter mile. And again, this is something that we discussed at great length with the home builders. And the home builders submitted a letter, which was submitted to you all, that expressed some concerns about the grid because of the additional cost of paving the streets on the exterior of the subdivisions. And staff feels that much of this will be offset by reducing the required paving width requirements within the subdivisions. So there are other options as well. Public Works, that we're working on a couple of other things that we hope will mitigate some of that. Public Works is working on a web-based functionality that would allow home builders to be able to see all of the subdivisions and other developments that have been approved, that have had received their entitlements. This will help them kind of weigh their options if they can see that they are going to go into a new area where they will be required to put in the infrastructure, or their option would be to go into an area where infrastructure already exists. So that will kind of help them decide where the most appropriate location for that subdivision would be. And also, you know, we are still allowing waivers because we understand that there are certain situations where the grid, they just not be feasible. And as an example of that, we have this aerial where it shows the blue triangle on the left is a water retention basin, and on the yellow stripe on the right is a utility easement. And so clearly, you know, these are things that disrupt the rigid grid. So there will be cases where it just won't be feasible. Any questions before I move on? Okay, we're on to Chapter 1908, Commercial and Industrial Districts. The formatting changes are the reorganization of the material, greater use of graphics, figures, and tables, and the renaming of Professional Office and Parking to Professional Office. The substantive changes are that we have streamlined the number of commercial districts. We've merged Commercial Plan Business Park into Office or Industrial as appropriate. We've converted Design Commercial from Zoning District to Overlay District. We've converted Neighborhood Service to C1 Limited Commercial. We've increased allowable lot coverage in commercial districts and updated parking lot design standards to allow for landscape and reduce building setbacks in C1. And the, reducing the building setbacks and increasing the allowable lot coverage, all of this is geared towards creating that pedestrian feel. So if, by reducing the setbacks, we're hoping to get buildings that are closer to the sidewalk. And the timeline, we will be completing our revisions, any revisions based on comments that we hear today to the document. In the first quarter 2011, we would see the first reading by the City Council, maybe in January, Recommending Committee, February, the second reading by City Council, February, and eligible for adoption, again, maybe February of 2011. And so in closing, I would just like to emphasize that we, staff, our main goal, again, was to create a user-friendly document, but we looked at this very holistically. We wanted to include zoning, the subdivision regulations, urban design, and basic architectural standards all in one document to make it just consistent and flow and concise. And, you know, some of the conceptual ideas were that we were focusing on regulating urban form by emphasizing the relationship of the buildings to each other, the streetscape and open space. We focused on design of circulation and public space networks by facilitating pedestrian-friendly mixed-use developments, and we wanted to ensure compatibility with the City of Las Vegas Sustainability Initiative.
Thank you. Director, will you?
Could you refer to the numbers and the letters that we've received in support of the work?
Oh, I apologize. We received a letter of support from the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association. It was in support of most of the concepts with the exception of the grid concept. We received a letter of support from the Southern Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. In that letter, they supported the document as is but requested additional work on some of the parking standards. And we received a letter of support from the Regional Transportation Commission.
All right. Any other questions from the Commissioners' comments? One of the things I would like to emphasize on this is the amount of work that's gone into this has been monumental. The ability for this code to be adopted puts the City of Las Vegas far ahead of the rest of this valley. And it shows the commitment by the council and all the staff within the city to make the City of Las Vegas the most development-friendly and easily accessible and a very simple communication process. This program will be online. You can go through the code, you'll be able to hit links back and forth, unlike now where you go, you have to have 10 books. And I remember when I became Planning Commissioner, they sent a box over of books, and I, cool, I don't read this much. It gave me a headache. But now, this kind of incorporates a lot of those things. Obviously, you can see we have other texts before us tonight that this is an evolving document. But one thing that I think came out of some of the members during the meetings we had, and I think this is very important for some of the people that live in the older neighborhoods that aren't considering new development, this walkable, this connectivity, all of these items, they aren't just buzzwords. These are simple things that as development happens, infill project happens, we make older neighborhoods much better, and we grow, this community grows by improving its existing infrastructure, its existing neighborhoods, rather than just saying we've got to rip them all out and start over, you know? This is like the tree thing tonight. Sometimes you take out a few trees, you get a lot more trees. Or as opposed to saying, we've got to take out everything and start over. Communities don't have the joy and the resources just to throw everything out and say, hey, if I had a blank sheet of paper, I can spend any amount of money I want, I can create anything. But this is going to, for all the wards, the older neighborhoods, this really is a great step forward. And I think if people use what the staff has done and the various user groups that have had input on this, we can wind up having, our quality of life within the City of Las Vegas will improve immensely. And thank you to Courtney, because I know she did a lot of the work. I just answer emails. So if there are no other comments, I think we need a recommendation. Commissioner Trobey?
I want to make a motion regarding Item Number 23, Text Amendment 39750, make a recommendation for approval as presented.
There's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
And that will move forward to the City Council in ordinance form. Thank you very much, Chairman Truesdale, but I also need to mention Flynn Fag, who oversaw the whole process, along with Courtney and Robert Summerfield, who is in the audience tonight, who put in a tremendous amount of work on this, and also Mark House, that did the technical work.
Yes.
This document will not be adopted, and then we start working on the technical aspects. All the technical aspects are ready, and upon adoption, it will be immediately available to the public. And Mr. Jerry Hilton, who also was a member of the working group, is here in support tonight, and we certainly appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Item 34, TXT 39836, Applicant Owner, City of Las Vegas, Discussion and Possible Action to Update the Downtown Centennial Plan to Add Various Commercial Uses to the 18B Arts District and to Add Language Permitting Pertaining to I-15 US-95 Widening Project.
Mr. Chairman, this text amendment will add amended language to the linkage section of the Downtown Centennial Plan in regards to the indots plans to widen I-15 US-95 on the north side. The proposal will also includes to amend and add uses within the Downtown Centennial Plan to include bed and breakfast ends, auction houses as a special use permit, bakery, beer/wine cooler off-sale establishments as a special use permit, convenience stores, craft and custom and craft work establishments, grocery stores, and Internet cafes within the 18B Arts District.
Okay, this was advertised public hearing. You'll be here with you to speak on this item. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioners' comments?
Chairman, I think some of this is cleanup. It's kind of unusual to see the two very different things together, but I think they're really just a way to enable some good things to happen that were already there. One of the items on here, I think, has a direct impact on the proposed grocery store that's going in the Soho Lofts. And I just wanted to say that I can't think of a better project, particularly for that location and for downtown, than what Sam Cherry and his group are doing there. And if you're not familiar with it, basically, they're going to have some organic foods and grocery, and the other side would be an urban lounge. So I think they eventually want to establish a bakery, and that building is becoming a real hotbed of vibrancy. The Globe Salon won lots of awards. And I guess the reason I say all this is because we often measure our successes by big buildings and entertainment districts and things like that. And although they have great merit, it's these little projects that really fuel the fire and inspire others. I can't say enough about it. So this would see my wholehearted support and happy to make a motion for approval for Agenda Item Number 34, the Text Amendment 39836.
Okay. If there are no other comments, questions, there's a motion for approval. He hit the wrong button. And that is approved.
And that goes forward to the City Council in ordinance form.
Now we go to Item 35, DAR 39955, Applicant Owner, City of Las Vegas, Update on Long-Range Planning Items.
That's mine. If we can get the PowerPoint, I want to take the opportunity to update the Planning Commission on a new initiative, which is the Citizens Academy of Planning. This is an idea that has been used by other big cities to do a couple of things. Please, next, to talk about bringing the technical knowledge and the theoretical knowledge of planning to members of the community so that you have better-informed citizens, better able to participate in the public process. Next, please. It is going to be a series of courses that will be given to a class that will be selected. The outreach will be through volunteers who apply for the program. And we will have a series of courses that are repeated year after year, so we have a larger group of citizens that have gone through and become graduates and alumna of the Citizens Academy as we go through the years. Next, please. We reviewed the 30 most populous cities, and there were several that had this type of project. Next. San Jose and Phoenix, Philadelphia, some of these were the ones that I reviewed and spoke to the directors about their programs. The idea is to be able to make persons familiar with the terms, talk about trends, what has been important in planning and what will be in the future, talk about zoning and the entitlement process, and again, have educated citizenry out there that is part of the discussion and the conversation on planning matters. Next, please. This would be a no-cost curriculum, and it's no cost to the city also. We're looking at 10 courses, an hour presentation with time for discussion over a 10-week period capacity in the 25 to 30 range. We will be doing, we have a website set up for persons to apply to be part of the academy, and we're working with the council offices. They have newsletters that go out, and we certainly hope that all the members of the Planning Commission will talk to persons that they know and suggest that they apply for the academy. Next, please. Courses, and I'll go through these quickly, where we'll be talking about the history of planning, where it comes from, what's the reason for planning, what are the terms and the basic foundation of planning. Next. The Master Plan Overview, going over the NRS requirements here in this state, the various elements, how we determine whether or not we've been effective in implementing the general plan. Please. Title 19, which will now be the UDC, and possibly with a number, as the chairman suggested. Going over all of the types of things that you are all familiar with, with setbacks and height and design standards. And of course, we'll be going over the new code. Next. Applications, what and when, steps to be taken, the review process. Next. The public hearing process, what goes on at Planning Commission and City Council, the appeal process is important about staff reports and public participation. We will be asking, obviously, for guest lecturers from this body for that course. Next. The permits, what happens after you get approved? How do you go through business licensing? That's crucial, the relationship with zoning. Next. Special area plans, Downtown Centennial Plan, Town Center, Medical District, all the ones that you're familiar with, how those are created and how those affect planning and those that live and work in those areas. Next. Walkable communities that we're working Next, walkable communities that we're working on. We are very close to bringing the first two of these to fruition, and these are crucial planning efforts in our existing neighborhoods to ensure their livability for the long term. Next, the website. This is one that will be taught actually in the IT lab, where people hands-on can go through the website and find everything that's available, how they work with the maps, how they find everything in the city clerk's office, and what's available online. And last, but not least, historic preservation, talking about what we do in that regard, how it is related to planning, and how it is implemented in the City of Las Vegas. Next, there is a timeline. The website is lasvegasnevada.gov/cap. That's where the applications and the information is. So, again, we certainly hope that we get lots of persons that are interested. We will be working with the neighborhood associations and sending out, all of the registered neighborhood associations, sending out information to them, putting together the list. Classes will commence towards the end of January. We have already met with all of us on staff that will be working on this and talking about other persons that we will invite to come in and speak with us on these various sessions. The first class would graduate then in March, and we would hope that we have new classes every year, and we continue to work on these courses to really make sure that planning is understood and part of the vocabulary throughout the community. So, that is one of our new initiatives. We certainly want to make the Planning Commission aware of it, and as I say, we'll be asking for your participation as we move forward. There's no action necessary, but we'll certainly accept any comments and questions from you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I truly believe this is a worthwhile program for people who want to understand the interaction of the land use plan and the codes, and how it affects them and how it affects our city. Should be great. Any other comments? We go on to item 36, DIR 40082, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to approve revision to the 2010 and 2011 Planning Commission meeting schedule.
We have that before you. We will be, based upon, as you know, we're going to the four-day work week, by having the meetings on Thursdays affects the Friday morning. So, we'll be going to, as we've contacted all of you for your input, we will be going to a Tuesday schedule. It will be in January of 2011. It will be the fourth Tuesday, but after that, and continually, it will be the second Tuesday. And you have the schedule in your package, and we'll certainly make that available to you repeatedly, but your next meeting dates, your first meeting dates in 2011 are the January 25th, and then the February 8th. So, as we, through the bylaws, we bring the calendar to you, so we request your action on that this evening.
Okay. If there are no, any comments or questions with regards to item 36, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, item number 36.
Here's a motion for approval on item 36. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and now we're going to go back to...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, ask you to recall item number 30, now that you've adopted your calendar, the question of what date in March it would be obeyed to, that would be the date of March 8th. If you would bring that item back, and then atop that as the abeyance date, that would be appropriate at this time.
Okay. So, if we could have a motion to rescind item 30?
So moved.
Okay, here's a motion to rescind item 30. Please cast your vote. And that'll be a hand vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, the maker of that motion, or that was the original housekeeping motions, right?
Right. So, now, the motion to obey the March 8th.
Motion to obey the March 8th, please.
Item number 30.
Item number 30. There's a motion to obey item number 32, the, what date again?
March 8th.
March 8th. Please, if there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved. And now, we go to item 37, which is the last cleanup item, DIR 40129, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to approve revision of the Planning Commission bylaws. This is needed in order to clarify the meeting dates and times which we just approved, and allow us to make those changes. If there are any comments or questions, a motion?
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion to approve item 37. Please cast your vote. Yes, yes. Oh, this one's good. And that is approved. Thank you. Item 38, citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time on any single speaker, as loud may be limited. Anybody wish to speak on this thing? Yeah, what, Todd, go on vacation, left it? Okay, meetings adjourned? And it's only nine o'clock. What a great...